All right, Dad, you ready? Check, 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 one, two, one, two, one, two. Clerk, please. Here.
Deb Bacon. Ann Dixon.
Here.
Gary Cody's absent. And Greg LaBosine is absent. Nick Gorham.
Here.
Ed Wazika.
Here.
At this time, the school committee president would call her daughter, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call the meeting, I think I have 6:02, and is there a roll call, please? Here.
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 Okay, I'd ask that you all rise for the pledge of allegiance, Tom Sargent, if you'd be so kind as to.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
And for those of you who'd like to remain standing for invocation, Lord, we ask that you help us tonight make decisions that are in the best interest of our taxpayers and help the state legislators and both local council members and school committee members do their best job possible. With that, we ask you in your name. Okay, Tom Sargent, emergency evacuation plan.
Anything else on Pearson's funny thing?
Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening. I thank all the state legislators for taking time, your only day off, and you have to come here tonight. So I appreciate you taking the time to discuss matters that are important to the town of Coventry. I do ask that we stick to the agenda tonight. We're all up for reelection. I don't want this to turn into an election rally. This is going to be strictly to discuss matters that are involved with the town, okay? That we find important. So with that being said, I'd like to have a welcome from the school committee.
Thank you. Again, thank you all for taking time out of your busy schedules, for the public, for your participation. If you're able to ask any questions later, I'm not sure exactly. And I guess that's basically it. Thank you.
Okay, I guess at the first item on the agenda, I'm going to have, Madam Clerk, if you would read that for me, B1, please.
Discussion with Rhode Island Department of Public Transportation DOT regarding Sandy Bottom Road, Route 118, Hill Farm Road.
Okay, and this was presented by Senator Rattakas. So if you have a couple of comments you'd like to say about it, I would appreciate it.
I'm not sure if DOT is here present, but they did contact the town manager and... Excellent, excellent. So they would want all your concerns to them in writing, and they would try to answer as best they can. I know Sandy Bottom Road is a issue that regarding the traffic and regarding the length of the project. So they want to try to see how they can help Coventry alleviate the concerns that the town council might have on Sandy Bottom Road. I think it's going to be one of the major projects here in the town of Coventry. The second issue, 118 Hill Farm and Hockney Hill Road, has already been under consideration. There are going to be improvements. I know one of the issues is the continuation of vehicles traveling on Hill Farm Road and going through the semi-intersection into the cemetery and damaging the fencing that I have for many years have a legislative grant to fix the Maplewood Cemetery. But again, the same thing happens over and over. So they're looking at some type of improvements. They cannot put any type of guardrail or barrier because that would cause probably more harm for a vehicle intersecting or crashing into a Jersey barrier than crashing into a fence. So they're looking at different ways of trying to alleviate that intersection. There could be possibly street lighting, additional street lighting signage, and possibly other improvements. But we're going to keep you updated on both those issues. But the Sandy Bottom Road is probably going to be the most important with the possible lane closure. So they'll be ready to stand by the town to try to facilitate the construction process.
Okay, thank you, Senator. And I think that is the biggest concern probably, and I asked it. Any council members get any concerns to their constituents to forward it to the town manager, and he'll get it to the state DOT. The traffic problem is going to be the biggest concern. But we'll overcome it. The bridge needs to be done, and construction needs to be done. So we'll, I'm sure, work out something that's satisfying to the best we can. Okay, the next item, Madam Clerk, item B2, please.
Discussion on minimum wage increase from $10.50 an hour to $12.50 an hour, and if it will have any significant impact on the town of Coventry's budget.
All right, that was also brought up by Senator Rattakas. Though it doesn't have a big effect on the town of Coventry, we do have some minimum wage people that work for us in the parks and rec department through the summer. But Senator, you'd like to just mention a little bit on that?
Again, that's another concern because it could not be only $12.50. It looks like there's a big push to make it $15 an hour by 2024. That's only four years out. So that could have a very profound effect on your budget. Again, I'm not sure how many individuals you do pay minimum wage, so that could have an effect. And I'll give you a perfect example. If you have 20 employees that work, say, 40 hours, you do the math, that's around $45,000 increase in just a dollar increase of minimum wage. So if that goes from $10.50 to $15, $4.50 multiplied that by 45,000, it could be a profound effect. So I know there's a lot of individuals up at the General Assembly, some of the progressive agenda that are pushing for $15 an hour. That's been a total disaster in other states. So we're hoping that it's kept to a minimum of only a dollar. That's probably where the battle's going to be. I know the bill came out of committee from Senate Labor, raising it from $10.50 to $11.50. But again, I'm not sure what your fiscal note could be for the town. But that's something you should be watching, especially if there's going to be a push this year to automatically push it up to $15 by 2024. That's only four years out. That's about a 40% increase.
Senator Rattakas, with the biggest impact we're going to have in the town with that would be in our parks and recreation program, where we have our summer camperships, which involve about 500 to 600 youths every year. That cost increase would directly impact on the fees that we are going to be forced to charge. Those programs are pretty much self-sustaining. To do that, we're looking at a substantial increase in those fees, which in turn is probably going to push some number of people out of the program. So you're going to be hurting, potentially hurting, a lot of the students that use that summer program. So any increase at all is going to have an adverse effect on that program and the children of town. And I'm assuming any town that has, or any city or town that's running a parks and rec program and doing these kinds of summer programs, that cost is going to be detrimental to their budgets.
And we're trying to hold, I've had legislation for many years trying to hold it to a CPI, Consumer Price Index, where it'd be 1% or 2% a year, or whatever the Consumer Price Index increase is. And this at least gives the citizen towns at least a nine-month heads-up on the increase. But again, there's a lot of folks that love the word 15, the buzzword that $15 an hour is going to resolve everyone's economic issue. So we're hoping to try to keep the increase down, and hopefully cooler heads prevail.
So Senator, you're looking, your stand on it is $1 an hour or something to that effect?
Well, none at all. The legislation, yeah, legislation we have right now, minimum wage is going up now constant from $7.40 in 2013 to right now $10.50, and that's in a short timeframe. We're looking at $10.50 and maybe just applying the CPI, Consumer Price Index, which the Department of Labor, U.S. Department of Labor, comes out with those figures every March. And the increase wouldn't take place till January. So it wouldn't have any effect for the current fiscal year or the summer program. And the Consumer Price Index has only been averaging around 1.5% to about 2.5% a year for the last 10 years. So that's a very minimal increase.
Okay, thank you. Are there any legislators or any council people, school has any comments? Okay, so if not, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I think on the House side, there's a piece of legislation in for 50 cents an hour. So that is certainly something that's going to have to be negotiated between the two finance committees.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, the next item, Madam Clerk, would be D, I'm sorry, B3, please.
Discussion on transportation climate initiative, TCI, gasoline tax proposed by the governor of Rhode Island.
Okay, I'm not sure how it's going to affect the town, but certainly give us a rundown on that. And Senator Rattakas, you have proposed that question?
That's a huge increase. What the governor's trying to do is, she's trying to create this TCI. It's a cap and investment system. It's called a cap and trade carbon tax. It could come up to around 17 cents to maybe even 35 cents a gallon. That's a huge increase to add to school bus transportation, police, your maintenance, town transportation. So that could have a profound effect if that passes. And I think, not sure if Foster has...
Yeah, so the issue with this is, and that came in front of Foster for a resolution, and they opposed it on a vote because it's a fee that's put on before the, you're tax exempt on your fuel. But this is put on prior to that, when it comes in from the suppliers, I believe, and then that would be passed down from what they might be saying, so. We're not tax exempt on state taxes. We have to pay them. We're exempt on the federal tax, on the fuel tax. We pay a state fuel tax. And so this is going to be a huge increase. And again, Kevin, how many gallons are we buying a year? Right, so you got your fire, your police, your highway, your school busing, your DPW. It's a huge cost. So Foster was one of the first towns that did a resolution. And I think your clerk maybe have it in her office now for the other towns to weigh in on it, so. We're all dying now with our budgets and trying to get these things and keep them in line. And every time that you add to these costs, where are we supposed to keep getting this money from? You're adding it, yeah, you're going to get it from the citizens, and now you're also looking to get it from the towns. It's killing us. Well, that's important that the town take up the issue in a resolution and make a stand on it because it means a lot as representing, your legislature's representing you. You come out against it, it gives us enough power to fight it. So it's very important.
We'll do that because it is important. Now, we don't do school bus. I mean, it does have an effect on our budget, but we don't, yeah, I mean, all in all, it's still going to affect the taxpayers. But yeah, that's definitely going to have an impact on it, so yes.
And I think most of us here this evening already have opposed the TCI tax publicly.
Yes.
Mr. President, again, I won't speak for everyone on the House side. There are a handful who support this, but I don't sense a big appetite to pass this tax increase.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Okay. I'm sorry.
I did the basic math, $225 a gallon, $230,000. You're looking at a $30,000 increase just in fuel.
And that's a lot. Well, like the town manager said, our budgets are tight. There is nothing left. I mean, the school will attest to that. We're all having tight budgets, so that means a lot. So I appreciate it. If you guys keep working against that, that'd be great. Okay, the next item on the agenda would be B4, Madam Clerk.
School Department discussion with the Coventry State delegation.
What I think I'll do on this one is just turn it right over to Madam President from the school committee, and you have a list of bullet points, and if you can discuss that, where our state delegations here, it's all yours.
Thank you. So the school committee basically put together some questions for you. And so we're all, we were asked to submit some questions. And so I'm going to start the discussion, but the rest of the school committee will take the questions that they were most interested in. The first one, which is the support of the school funding task force report, this was asked of everyone. Everybody from this committee was concerned about this, and it was their primary question. So I don't know if you've had a chance, the local delegation, to actually read the report that came out on January 28th. I'm sure you read it in the Projo, and hopefully it has been delivered to you. And it was the special legislative task force to study the Rhode Island school funding formula. I know it's been in the news. We've, as school committee members across the state, have been asking for a change in that formula. I'm sure there's been some cities and towns as well, from a local perspective, from the municipalities have also asked to have some changes made because the formula is getting dated. I don't know. I would like to hear, there's 14 recommendations that came out. I think the Projo basically reported about five. Hopefully you saw those five. I don't know if anybody wants to speak to this report, or if you're, yeah. So if someone could just, you know, if you guys could just say whether or not you support most of the recommendations, some of the recommendations, or none of the recommendations, we'd be interested in knowing.
Some of them I do support. First of all, I'm a big school choice proponent, really push for that. The one thing that, I was actually a member on that committee as a representative on the Republican side. Coming from a municipal background, one thing that struck me that I needed to really push home, and they did get it, was the huge swings on the funding formula, which right now, prior to this, threw West Greenwich and Exeter into a complete tailspin. Their swing was in excess of $800,000, which really relates to more than their 4% increase just in the swing itself. So I had mentioned at the end of the committee, I just brought what I could bring forward. It wasn't much I could fight because I'm outnumbered. The rural communities are, as we all know, punitive, hurt by the funding formula because most of the money is allocated through a system. I guess the most important thing I can tell you to push, and I told Exeter and West Greenwich, is 40% of the weight is in free and reduced lunch programs. So out in rural communities like this, there's kind of sometimes a stigma where, you know, they really don't want to sign on. But if there's any way of trying to get as many as you can that truly need it on board with that, it's a tremendous part because it's 40% of the weight of the value. They take in communities' house sales and average incomes, so that kind of hurts us out here, too. So the one thing, like I said, I did bring to the table was the cap, and that would be on the number four proponent that's in there. And they did listen. I thanked them for that. And that would cap no reduction more than 1% of the previous year. Did you get the new funding? Okay, so you see, that alone, which was implemented in West Greenwich, increased it by $513,000 that they're getting back in in the transportation costs. To fill you in a little bit, what was shocking for me was when the superintendents came, there's different parts of the state have different problems. And two of them that stuck out was Newport and then One Socket. So with One Socket, their biggest cost was the transportation, costing them over a half a million dollars above what they had thought because in One Socket, believe it or not, it's the highest DCYF involvement. And once the kids are pulled out of One Socket and placed, they have to keep them into the One Socket school system, which, you know, you don't want to uproot the kid on maybe the only stable thing that he has. So that cost them a lot. So they adjusted, I believe they adjusted the transportation funding. Newport was a completely different problem. Newport's problem was the non-English speaking learners. And it was eloquent what she said. She said, "When you pull down off 138, when you cross over that bridge, and you take a right and you take a left, it's two completely different worlds." You know, it's a service industry area, so they're having a lot of English-speaking problems with kids that come in, work visas, don't even speak any English at all. So that's challenging with them there. One other important thing that was addressed in this, there are three cities and towns that Providence, Pawtucket, and One Socket, and One Socket being the worst. The way the formula is set up, they send you the funding formula, and it's strictly based on core expenses in your school system, not non-core. Non-core would be pensions and other obligations that aren't part of the funding formula. But those three communities, which are receiving north of 80% of their funding anyway, and then appropriating the balance of that through their local appropriations, they're not even funding their core expenses with what's spent to them. They're diverting that money to non-core funding expenses. And yet they're sitting there asking for more money. So one thing that concerned me, and I also brought forward, was how do we fix that? So, you know, you simply just can't cut their funding because then that just, it's aspirates the problem. So what they did, and it's in this formula, it's going to, they've got so many years to come up. And One Socket, I think, is like 13 million a year that they're diverting that they shouldn't be. And then, yet, they're asking for more money, and they can't balance it as they are now. So the important thing on this is it's going to require them to come up with a corrective action plan. And they've got a certain deadline to come up with it. It has to be reviewed, and it has to be implemented. And if they don't, then there's ramifications on that point. So it is a challenge, and it's somewhat of a moving target. These are suggestions, and there'll be discussions as it moves through the legislative body, changing and tweaking. But there were immediate things to be addressed, which is the swing, the huge swing was addressed immediately. And then there's more long-term things. So the governor does add seven and a half million to the budget for the non-English learning things, ELLs. And if you've got the new formula, you'll see it actually influxes a lot of money into education, which softened a little bit of the hits. So I don't really think, you know, she's asking a lot in her budget, $10.2 billion. There's definitely going to be cuts, but I think some of the things that aren't probably going to be cut would be the education and the situation that we're in in the state of Rhode Island with our education problems around. I think that's going to be hard for anybody to cut that. But we've got to be accountable for the money that they do get. So that's the other important side of it. So, I mean, I don't know if that helps you out, or if you have any other questions.
I think one of the biggest recommendations that I know would affect us locally and would be good for schools is number one, which is the local share is not consistently funded or understood. And I just am curious how the rest of the delegation might feel about this. I know you worked on the task force, so I'm not sure how you feel about that. But I really do believe that if the formula changes and people understand what the local share is, and then the locale, the local doesn't give the money, refuses to give that piece that they are due to actually make us whole, then what are the ramifications of that? And does this delegation agree that they should be, at least it should be evident what that local share is according to the state per the formula? And would you recommend some kind of consequence to the locals for not funding what their supposed share is based on demographics?
Are you talking, for example, the Pawtucket Providence in One Socket not funding their core funding?
I'm talking about us. I'm just talking about Coventry, quite honestly. When you level fund a community, schools, and you just give them the maintenance of effort that they got last year, even though the state may give X for their share, the communities are expected to come up, per their ability to tax, a certain amount of money.
I get what you get, yeah.
Yeah, and if they don't do that...
So I did have some discussion with that, and again, that's going to be part of the, what I'm going to be bringing to the table. Again, we all know I've come from municipal, and I've sat there many times where the schools won't go below zero. And there's some times where, you know, I look at the budget, and they possibly can, but they bury their feet in the ground, and I'm not picking on either side because that situation that you're discussing pits school committees against town councils, and that's an unfair thing. So they won't go below zero, and sometimes they can because it affects their future funding moving forward. So they've got a valid argument. And that is what I brought up and said, you know, we can't make it punitive to try and save money when we can. And it gets to the point where the school committees will say, no, we can't go below zero. Then it gets into the writ and determination, and it starts costing money just to fight for the argument of you can go down or no we can't. And I did bring it up, so what can we do to not be punitive if they actually go below zero, and it's not a maintenance of effort thing? It's other things that create the ability to go below, where they can work with a school committee. I remember when I was on the council, and I knew paying school could drop a little bit, and they didn't want to do it, but we worked with them. I said, you know, we're going to cut you 1%, but if you cut, are you going to drag this out? Are you going to go to court, go to writ? Because by the time we get done, what we can save is going to get lost on legal fees. So they did go down 1%. They worked with the school, and we've worked with them on capital programs. But it definitely, the way it's set up, is it pits school committees against municipal leaders and councils. And I definitely want to be an input on that and see where we can go with that and put some language in it. And your help along with council's help will help move that ball to where we can work on that issue.
I think Representative Chippendale has a comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. Generally speaking, on the report, I would put myself in the opposed camp. We're seeing, as the senator pointed out, there's a pitting between the local, the urban communities and the rural communities, which is extremely divisive and hurtful to communities like this. We don't have the tax base out here that the urban core has as far as businesses and other sorts of taxes. We have homeowners. So that increase, when it happens in the rural towns, goes directly to our taxpayers, the homeowners and their home, the property taxes. That's extremely problematic. I think the biggest thing that's really almost being ignored, I know the committee did talk about it a little bit, is we're on the heels right now of one of the most gut-punching, devastatingly negative reports on the state of the state of our schools in the state of Rhode Island, where we're looking at schools that are churning out students with a proficiency in the 4% range in math and English. We have a new commissioner of education who has some great, bold ideas and comes from a district or a community that has done things very differently over the years. The governor just last week said that she has a big announcement coming that's going to revolutionize the way education's done. So the picture I'm trying to paint is we've got a lot of balls in the air as jugglers, and they're all very different, very unique, and very challenging individual problems. And at the same time, we're trying to solidify a foundation for funding when we don't know where those balls that are in the air are going to land right now. I think that's extremely problematic. I think that's problematic when we see the protectionism that I saw in that commission, where charter schools are being gutted, pathway programs, and I know that's a sore point in this room, but pathway programs are being gutted. Parents are being offered fewer and fewer options for their children to get an education. And in Coventry, that might not be the end of the world. But in certain other districts, it can be the end of that child's educational world because they may be stuck in a chronically underperforming school. These problems are being tackled right now from both sides, the Republican side, the Democrat side, any side, every side. Everyone has proposals that are all in the mix right now. Many of them are very good proposals, and many of them, if passed, will change the way we need to fund. So I'm very hesitant with pushing through the funding formula in the way that it's produced, in the way that it's been presented so far. I'm hopeful that in the discussions down the road, the things that are happening legislatively with regards to changing the way education occurs in Rhode Island are considered in this funding formula because it is critical. And you don't have to be told by me that we get hurt by the existing funding formula. And I am convinced this new funding formula may hurt us even more. And when I say us, I mean the, yeah, the folks out in the sticks. And with that, I'll yield back to the chair.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to make a follow-up comment about charter schools. I think this proposal is very fair in the following way. It's not, like you say, gutting, I'll quote, you're gutting charter schools. The charter school people who run these schools have said that. But if you're not producing better results than the sending district schools, I'm, I'm not sure you deserve 100% of the sending tuition. 50% sounds pretty fair to me. And so if that changes the ability for some charters to still exist, that's not a problem for me. I believe in school choice in some cases, but certainly in a place like Coventry and in some of the suburbs, if your schools are doing better than the, where you're sending your schools, I don't know how you can justify a full tuition match. I think the 50% makes sense to me, but that's just my particular opinion.
And Ms. Patton, I completely respect your position and on this, bringing it up was me justifying my position. I am pro-school choice. And while you and I may have different ideas of what that looks like, I respect your position on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
One other thing that I'd like to bring up as we move forward this, almost, and I'd like to talk to you guys about it and see if it would be a better idea. Again, in the rural community, we're served lemons, we gotta make lemonade with it. So we gotta get the best we can. And some of the thoughts I have is when you, when the child moves or the children move from one school to, if they're going to a cert program or to a charter school, it's what that costs your town. So some towns, that's 18,000 per student, some towns, like others are 13,000. I believe they shouldn't be using that number. It should be almost like how they come up with the core cost that they did a survey in our region and said that the core cost is X as an average. So I'm, I'm suggesting maybe instead of what you're actually spending, an average of what it's costing the state from the high to the low, and that's the number that follows the child, instead of your actual high and your low. And that'll allow a more fairer number moving, depending on how, how you guys are operating your individual budgets would affect that. But it should bring it closer instead of, you know, if you're way up or way down. Just a suggestion. Think about it and let me know how that works or if it would work to help. Again, we've gotta, we've gotta come up with some type of solutions or, and they gotta be somewhat reasonable and we're not gonna get anywhere. Like I said, the most important thing that I brought to the table was that 1% decrease, which I think would, even if it's bad and like Mike says, it gets worse as we go, the pain will be spread out. It won't be, you know, a half a million or $800,000 swing in a year and then down to 200 where you, it's very difficult to react to those moves. So it's 1%, 1% from the previous year is the maximum it can decrease. So again, think about what I said, see if that might be a solution. But we gotta come forward with some ideas to help move that football, to help us down the field in our direction. And little things will help like that maybe.
Was there, were there any more comments about this before I turn it back to my members? They may have some follow-ups on this particular issue because we were all concerned about it. Is there, no? Okay. Dave?
No, ma'am.
Luke?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a point because Representative Chippendale, you make a good point. Who, whose back does this fall on? And I can tell you, it's the taxpayers in this town. And if we talk about the, the split between school committees and councils, which hasn't really happened in the past couple of years in this town, what has happened is our community is kind of taking a divisive attitude between each other on how they view schools. And that is toxic. Because what's happening is as you levy out your 4%, which is our max on the state, and we're trying to make up everything on the backs of the taxpayers while we, there's no maintenance of effort on the state's side, it becomes very frustrating because we can't give answers. So last cycle, people are asking us to make five-year projections. We can't do that. Because unlike the town, we can't count on the state on actual projections to figure out where we're gonna be with staffing levels, with our state funding. You know, a lot of this is predictable. We know how many students we'll probably have for the next 10 years. We know healthcare is probably gonna rise at a certain rate, although that's out of control too, which is a separate discussion. But what we can't fixate is what the state funding formula is going to do. In addition, what has made an issue has been brought up is because now with school choice, we don't know how many kids are gonna bounce out of the district because as we start the downward spiral on this narrative of our community as our schools are going downward and they're not making capital investments, well, that impacts people's view of the town. So now you have people who are marginal, who may be able to afford to go to another school, who just perceptively don't want to be there anymore, decide to send to another district, which also impacts our budget, which is difficult to predict, is an unstable model. And while, you know, we can blame it on the town for level funding. I choose not to do that because I would say in context, we went through a very difficult economic downturn. And I know the council at the time was trying to relieve the taxpayers who were struggling, who were out of work, from that burden. And so in context, maybe that made sense at the time. I don't think it makes sense now. I don't think it makes sense for our town to now not allow us to tax at a higher rate to make up for some of that gap. And that is on the local level. But I would hope that you would cherry pick this report. I'd hope you'd get to know it. And as far as a maintenance of effort, that is one simple thing on clean legislation that I think could go forward. And then I do agree with you, Senator Rogers. We need to figure out how we come up with some sort of formula that is fair for public schools when we have to send out of district. Because right now, we have to keep the lights on. We have to pay the same amount of teachers, whether it's 20 kids in class or 15. And while you may support school choice, again, it is dividing our communities. And as far as the tax base, it's just unsupportable. We are in a donut hole in Coventry and I'll zip it up like this. It's based on your poverty and your ability to tax. And you said it, your ability to tax in Providence with all those businesses, when you throw that new tax out, it goes on some of those businesses. The only people who feel it here are the mom and pop shops and the people who live down the street. And it's really hard. And it's hard as a school committee member to look them in the eye and say, "We're not the trouble, but we have to support our schools. We have to support our very quality education." This is the local issue. This affects everything in our town because schools eat up the largest portion of the budget. And unless we get this addressed at the state level, it's gonna keep dividing us as a community. So I hope you all will pay attention to this and at least give us something out of this report that can go forward this year. Thanks.
Mrs. Coloney?
Luke said it all.
Okay. Mr. Pearson?
I appreciate all of your comments tonight on this topic. And I, I understand where everyone is coming from. I've seen the recommendations. Some of them make sense, some of them don't. There are some flaws in there. There are some going to be, and what Mr. Rogers pointed out, pitting the urban versus rural districts or even suburban districts against each other is in there in plain text. And if you want to talk offline about that, I'll explain my observations a little more. But it has to do with some recent articles that, that were put out. And it has to do with, with incoming students during the year and that provision that they want to make in there. It's, it's a ticking time bomb. So I, I hope the commission will keep looking at this problem. As you said, it's a lot of balls in the air, a lot of things that need to be, to be examined to get something that's, that's fair. Clearly, our position is the, the large swings that we experience in Coventry with, you know, state funding, one year we gain a million dollars, the next year we lose 700,000. Makes budgeting so difficult. And it's very painful for us. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. And I know these are only recommendations, so this isn't gonna affect, I don't think it'll be in effect for next year or even this fiscal year coming up. So I think it has to pass as far as in legislation.
Well, some of it is in fact, it immediately addresses things like, if it passes in this budget, for example, Exeter West Greenwich is realizing $500,000 going back into their district because that one, and again, he mentioned it, where the swings go high and low, that, that is addressed and that, I'm sure that will pass. So it does bring some stability to what you're gonna get the next year. You can guarantee what your, it'll tell you exactly what your worst hit will be. And it will be no more than 1% from the, the previous year. You cannot lose more than that. And that's very important because that makes it stable. That's including everything, transportation costs and all of that. You cannot be reduced more than 1% from the previous year. So those swings are gone and it gives you somewhat of an ability to know where you're gonna be in next year out, the next year out. I mean, you can project it at a 1% deficit right out and tell you what the worst case scenario could be very easily. On your operating, no, that may change with students coming in and stuff like that. But that, that would change, that's not even relative to the funding formula on that point.
That was some of the concepts we discussed previous years, the whole harmless legislation that I've been putting in, which would hold harmless the community, whatever you received the previous year, you would receive this year. Plus, again, your, our budget, we don't vote on the budget. So we don't know the final figures till at least mid-June, sometimes even the end of June, which is another detriment. But again, with the 1%, sort of an insurance marker, it could possibly help with, with those numbers.
Yeah, my final thoughts on, on this particular question is I would hope that all of you get very much involved with this particular task force recommendation and understand when it's gonna be looked at. And if you need any, you know, advice or, you know, conversation with this committee, I would hope that you would reach out to us. We pretty much kind of know when you're gonna be doing it, so hopefully we'll reach out to you as well. But I'm hopeful that a lot of what's in this report will be supported by our local delegation because I think it will help Coventry. That being said, I believe the next question was Mr. Pearson's. So it's the repeal of the Evergreen, Evergreen contracts law. Mr. Pearson?
Well, this will probably play out in court and I think I submitted this before the town signed on to the current lawsuit that's going on. And thank you for doing that, by the way. This, of course, has to do with legislative interference in municipal contracts and the extra burden you're placing upon our shoulders and the extra disadvantage you're giving us when it comes to contract negotiations. I know some people in the room will disagree with me thoroughly on that, but they're wrong. So instead of carrying out the lawsuit, I just threw it on here, hey, why don't you repeal it? I know the answer to that is probably no, never gonna happen, but I put it on here for conversation. Thank you.
Anybody from your side want to talk about that?
Doesn't look like there's a ground swell of folks jumping to speak on this, but I'll do it. Absolutely, Committeeman Pearson, there's not going to be a repeal of the Evergreen contract. It will play out in court. I think, if I'm thinking in my head, I think there's eight legislators here at the table. I think eight of us are strongly in favor of it, eight of us are strongly opposed to it. I don't think anything's gonna change any of our minds. We look forward, I look forward to the outcome of, of the lawsuit. I'll leave it at that because that's all I can say. That's really all, all we have to say.
Okay, thank you. And I believe the next question was from Mr. Murray.
Thank you. So I just wanted to put this on as far as discussion of current and future school building bond funds and adjustment of state shares based on community bonding capacity and need. Some may know I'm, I'm the chair of the building committee and we're going through our necessity of school construction for the ride effort. We're a little behind on the eight ball, but we are catching up and we're hopeful that we can get a final answer during phase two on what our schools actually need and what our strategy is to approach. We're, we're fast approaching our phase one submission, which is important. And I wanted to bring this up because one of the things, as you know, we passed the $250 million bond and that is going to get absorbed very quickly by school districts, that we're not the only ones in need. And as you know, a lot of this is due to deferred maintenance for many, many years. And so I've heard, you know, the times that we can go below zero, I don't know of a school district that could actually afford to go below zero if they're doing their numbers right and are actually running their school districts correctly. And the reason I say that is that money should be going into capital funds that we've never spent, right? We should have been funding our schools to make sure that we didn't have to bond $250 million. But here we are. And, and the truth is, we need about that billion that's been predicted. So that is going to come up, probably again, as far as the second phase of another $250 million bond. I wanted to throw that out. We're obviously in support of that. I don't want to speak to the whole committee, but I think we would be because we know that the money's gonna get absorbed. The other thing is not putting so many qualifiers on it. I know that was in addition to what we already have as our housing aid, which we're qualified for 44%. But some of those, what I call kickers, we wouldn't really qualify for. So, you know, if we decide not to merge some of the schools because we want to rebuild, we don't qualify for that 5%. But I will tell you, a lot of this relates back to our bonding capacity because we're going to have this discussion. We talked about tax capacity. There is only so much we can bleed out of these taxpayers. So we're already asking for a lot of increases to say to the people, "Listen, support education, run our operations, pay our teachers. Oh, by the way, though, we need to bond 150, 200 million dollars to build new schools because of all this deferred maintenance and everything else." And if people are scared by that number, I'm sorry, but everyone knows, you know, if you don't know, the, the school, the new high school, I believe in East Providence is what, 240 million dollars, somewhere in that range. And these schools are expensive today, especially with new technologies. And so I, I throw this out because I wanted to get your read on where you stand on future bond, future monies for our housing aid. And then also just consider, if any of you are advocates or you know advocates in the House or the Senate, that would propose something that would be more relative to the bonding capacities of the town. And the reason I said is because we're gonna be limited. We have a lot of improvements to do. And even if our taxpayers would support it, we are gonna be limited by the actual bonding capacity, which hems us up. Now, you go to Central Falls, Pawtucket Providence, and I think Central Falls has done work there. Their, their housing aid's up at 97%. Well, then I only have to come up with 3%. That's pretty easy to do. And I understand the tax capacity is much lower. But again, as I mentioned, we're in a donut hole a little bit in Coventry because everyone thinks that people here are way above the median, which we have a lot on both ends of the spectrum, so we get hit pretty hard. So that's all. Get your read.
Anybody have any comments?
Just, what is the estimates? Have you figured out what the estimates the town would need for, for school repairs? Or is there a number that you're floating out there for a bond?
No, not yet. We've just finished our stage one, which really identifies the general need. And the Jacobs, Sarah's here, I think we were 67 million in warm, safe and dry.
Correct. Yeah.
Can we just keep the mics off if you're not?
Correct. Well, our current building project, they have it at about $50 million as our basic needs, just to be warm, safe and dry. So that would not change the envelope of our buildings whatsoever or update for any educational enhancements to run, to run the program. It just gets them to where they should be with proper heating, ventilation, roofs, structures. So if we were to take on all projects, it would be a sizable amount. That's not the anticipation that we're going. And as Mr. Murray said, we're just in the process of wrapping up stage one right now.
You're gonna be asking that money this year? Are you gonna be looking for that amount for this calendar year? I mean, are you gonna put it out for the voters this year? Is it gonna be a number for this coming fiscal year?
No. So if we follow the proper protocols for the stage, stage one, two and three application, stage two, a stage one is due in February, stage two is due next fall, we'd get ride approval in November. So the earliest we would look to go out and to get a vote from the community would be next winter and around February. It'd be a special election.
Right. And we, we don't want to, we're hesitant to throw out numbers because, one, we don't want to create panic among the community, right? But it's well-known, the Jacobs report came out with numbers and most communities were not, it wasn't soft on where communities were. And so we are in that 50 million range. That's a well-known number. And if people haven't paid attention, then it's been well-publicized for a couple of years now. We started that as a baseline. That doesn't address educational adequacy, which is new teaching methods, technology has changed, you know, kids don't learn from a teacher in front of just school teachers nowadays. So there's other things we have to look at, but we don't know yet until we finish our stage two, what that number's gonna look like, or our bonding capacity, or that discussion about what the voters will, will view on this, you know, whether they'll even support anything.
What's your matching funds in Coventry, 30, 33%?
No, it's a minimum of 44%.
So that 50 million, that's the total cost of the projects, not including the 40-some percent you'd get back in matching funds, correct? Or is that 50 million plus?
50 million has not even been decided upon as the final project. So I just want to clarify, that was what was identified in mechanical envelope, structural needs for health and safety. So that's just one component of it. Once stage one's approved, the building committee's task will be to look at Once stage one's approved, the building committee's task will be to look at the total needs of the buildings, both from a health, safety, as well as where we want to go educationally. Then we will have a project cost, whatever that project cost would be. If we only did health and safety, $50 million would be the cost of that project cost. But I don't want to have that number tied to a project yet because we're not at that level.
I think to answer your question, though, yes, the bottom line is 44% would be the offset. But the town would have to, obviously, you know, bond for that full amount. And just so the public knows, we'd get reimbursed 44% if we get through the stage two and the project gets approved. And that's less any other sort of kickers that would be added on to that. But like I said, some of those kickers we wouldn't really qualify for as far as any regionalization or things like that. So it would help if we were had other sort of qualifiers, one maybe being that in looking at operational needs of the community. And some of the nuances, you know, every, listen, every 39 cities and towns has its own nuance. But the truth is, from a state perspective, we need something that makes rational sense as far as the the construction costs. We talked about operating. When you're asking, like I said, I go back to, you know, if you're you're charging people that 4% every year and you say, that's what you should be doing, keep up with schools, well, we're not. Because even if we go this year, for example, Coventry, even if we were to go to 4%, we were not putting money in the capital aside. We can't afford it. And that's looking at cuts on the school side. You know, we're trying to make these cuts. So we're we're constantly operating on this structural deficit. I work off math. The math's just not working. So somehow we need, and, you know, at a local community, you have restrictions. And so from a state level, we need a lifeline from the from the state and figure this out. And I don't think we're the only community looking for that lifeline. I think you've heard it a number of times. Because there's been multiple task force on this, right? I think there's been probably five in the past 15 years about education funding, including school construction.
I do agree, but again, there's like, for example, I keep hearing the word capital, capital, capital. I mean, we deal with that in every municipality. It's also, I'm gonna get on my horse here and work from from a municipal end. In the towns that I was involved in, we had years ago put in a certain percentage of our budget automatically went into capital to fund things, not your school, new schools, not your new libraries, but the simple stuff like fire trucks, police cruisers, paving, and all that stuff was a transfer that we had put in years ago. Mr. Gormwood, remember, I think his family was involved in that years ago. And then right now, we're trying to address it because as costs exceeded the 2% transfer, we are putting a charter amendment in to move that up from 2 to 4%. It'll be a hit in one year, but once it's built into the budget, that money goes to the side. So there's other ways of addressing capital. Again, we're gonna, I'll do everything I can to you, but at a certain point, you know, you gotta look inward too and look for solutions. And I'm just throwing that out there, just from my municipal background. That's all. Don't take it as, just take it as constructive.
And I do respect that because in a normal capital improvement plan, you'd have a five-year plan. And ideally, a municipality would put that money aside if they had fund balance at the end of the year. Here's the difficulty in schools, we get an allocation. And if you're honest with your budget, like we have been, we try to narrow our focus to only the core of what we operate. So when you get to the end of the year, there is no surplus, or very, very little. And a lot of times, we don't have that fund balance to put in. We can't just say, oh, we're gonna, you know, we got 500,000 fund balance, so we'll we'll take this and move that. We have what we're given by the town. We have very few other funding avenues. We have impact fees. But how much other construction, you know, directly, it should be coming to us because, you know, that that's what that's partially for, right? It impacts the schools. But that gets exhausted. And so schools are a little bit different in that you have less flexibility when someone's allocating your funding. We either ask for capital and it comes because the taxpayers support it, or we have a little bit of surplus we put aside. It's just not enough. And and right now, as you know, we have to, you know, keep a certain amount aside for maintenance to to ensure we qualify for the ride funds. So it's becoming difficult, that's all.
Yeah, I do, and I understand that, but schools get, like you said, 40% matching from the state. Where when the municipal end doesn't get any matching from the state, they have to do it on their own. So again, I do understand that, but like I said, it was just constructive criticism. Maybe you should start looking ahead to fixing an issue, you know, and not just look up at the state and I'm gonna do everything I can. But I I had this same discussion with Exeter and West Greenwich. A lot of it is gonna take all of us, a school committee, a town, and a state. Because we're we're basically on our own up there. We're outnumbered. We are, even if we're Ds and Os, we're outnumbered on on the urban centers. So we've got to fix the problem a lot on our own, too. So it's just constructive criticism, and I'm willing to help any way I can.
Okay, and the next one was vaping. For those of you who were here last year, I think we did sound the alarm that we were having a major problem with our children, basically, our young students, our high schoolers and middle schoolers becoming addicted with vaping products. I seem to remember that there was sort of like shock from the from our local delegation. That being said, it kind of reared its ugly head in the media. And you certainly now have, just from the media reports, what we were trying to say last year has certainly come to fruition in some very negative, negative ways, and that people have died from vaping products. That being said, is the is the GA doing anything? I know the governor has done some things. I'm hopeful that you are supporting her initiatives with flavored products. If not, I'd like some justification as to why you wouldn't. And then last but not least, is anybody willing to put a bill in that would restrict or maybe even give us some money to help us educate our kids more? Give money to the health department more on this particular issue because it's a serious, serious problem?
Okay, I guess it's me again. I think as far as the educational aspect, that's probably the best way to go about it. We can't help a school enforce no smoking in the boys' room. It was a problem when I was a kid, it was a problem when you were a kid. You know, I mean, it's gonna be a problem of enforcement. Where I think we would have an issue is Department of Health is is under the executive. And while we can certainly put legislation in to suggest that they do this, the Department of Health, we can allocate money through the budget, but we can't really tell them how to spend it. That being said, this particular director of the Department of Health is extremely proactive, believes very strongly in communication. I have no issue whatsoever with having my office reach out to her office and discuss what may be in the pipeline as far as assistance for schools to advertise, any other assistance that might be helpful to folks in your position who are dealing with it on the front lines. I'm more than happy to do that, Mrs. Patton-Orton. We can touch base. In a follow-up, I can have my staff get in touch directly with you unless any of my colleagues has anything more to af- excuse me, more to offer on that or suggest.
I actually have a question, if I may, maybe to the superintendent. Do, does every student from kindergarten through grade 12 participate in a health class, whether it's part of the phys ed? Does every student participate in a health curriculum? And I know you know where this is going because I'm I'm asking.
Is that, that's on, we have a K to 12 health curriculum in terms of where substances are, you know, are, there's instruction around substances, obviously developmentally, it has to be developmentally appropriate. But just, you know, we also work with the Substance Abuse Task Force. They've come into our middle school along with the school resource officer, which we have at our middle school. And they've they've worked with every single team this year. So it's the first year we've had the substance, I mean, the SRO, and we've had the Substance Abuse Task Force. We've also have a student assistance counselor at our high school this year. It's the first year we're able to get funding for that through the Kent County Prevention Coalition. So there's a lot of things we're doing in terms of education. We actually are doing intervention. You know, we've increased our supervision of bathrooms. We have sensors that'll be going into the middle school that was purchased, were purchased by the Kent County Prevention Coalition. That'll go, so we're gonna test them out to see how effective they are. We have actually handheld metal detectors that our our staff that work through the police department, they're gonna train our staff at the high school so we can actually detect the metal part of the vape pens. And we have to, we we actually wrote a policy or amended a policy around that. So there's a lot of things we're doing in terms of education and also trying to just, can I stop people from using? Probably not, as as the representative said, but what we can do is make it very difficult for them to do in in schools. So it's not just the health curriculum that we have, but we have a variety of these other interventions. And I just signed a letter for a grant that the Kent County Prevention Coalition is is trying to write for a grant to get us additional supports at the middle school because their feeling is we shouldn't even need to back down to like fifth grade and fourth grade to really start not just a health curriculum where we're educating, but really start some more intensive intervention. So I I didn't mean to go off, but I wanted, I knew where you were going with that. Those are all the things that we're doing.
Right, so that was my question. So isn't vaping automatically covered in in those, within those, within the context of those health curriculums?
So so educating individuals and then intervening, like, as we see now, the research showing people are dying. And so we've known cigarette smoking for years and educated, but it hadn't stopped people. Many of our parents, I'm told by the nurses, when they detect students or we detect students vaping, many of the parents are aware that their children are doing it. I don't think they're aware of the significance of the, how dangerous it is, especially with that vitamin E acetate and the THC, the vaping, that they've connected that directly to to death. So what we've talked about and as a committee and as a school department, a school community, is that we just want to take drastic measures because we don't want, it's a matter of time before somebody dies and a student in Rhode Island dies. And we want to make sure we're doing everything. So it's much more beyond the hell, I believe, before, you know, we all know about not, you know, drinking and drugging and all that and and just say no. But there's much more to that. So, I know, I think we're taking as drastic measures as we can. But any support we can get from the legislature to can continue, because most of these things I mentioned, they're not funded through even the logo. It's it's more funded like the Substance Abuse Task Force, the Police Department, the Kent County Prevention Coalition. These are outside funds that we're accessing and resources to do this work.
Just to answer that question, back, just pulled up 2007, it was a Senate bill number 19, which became a law. It was my bill regarding substance abuse in schools. And so we do have some of the tools for you, and I can get a copy of that bill. I have it right here in front of me. It was chapter 726, uh, 426, back in 2007, S19. It was regarding tobacco by minors, and I think vaping is probably in the same category. So that would give you some type of tools to work with substance abuse in schools. I think that was a state law that we had passed.
You know, we have policy, we amended our policy around tobacco-free to include like e-cigarettes. And so we have the policies. It's about implementing and about change, right? So again, I'm not sure that we can stop individuals from using, but we can make it very difficult to to use in schools.
Right, I think that's what this bill did. That's what the law did. It was passed in 2007. I'll get you a copy because I remember that discussion we had several years ago.
Are they being punished when they're caught? Is there a punishment with with the abuse of it in school?
There are there are consequences, just like with tobacco or or drugs. But I think what we're trying to do is also be therapeutic. We want to, we want to promote change, right? So the laws have changed. Years ago, you could expel kids, and and people need to understand that. These are all our kids, and they're always gonna be our children, and we're responsible. So even when we send kids out of district, we're still paying for them. So really, what we're trying to be is, there's consequences, but we also are looking to be therapeutic. Like, one of the things the high school's looking at is when someone's caught with THC, we're gonna assume that's probably not the first time they've used it. And so one of the, what we'll be doing is bringing some back to the policy subcommittee about making a mandatory that they meet with the council or with their family. Charahoe does something where students have to go seven-week course at night when they're caught with e-cigarettes. And so we haven't taken that step yet, but we've talked about it. So we're always looking to improve the interventions. But the goal is to reduce and and promote change.
I'm I'm reading part of the bill. We did remove the monetary fines, and it was 20 to 30 hours of community service again to help you. That was one of the biggest debates. I'll get a copy for you, and then we can look at it if there's gonna be some adjustments. I know it's been 13 years since this bill passed, so again, applying to also vaping. But I think back then, it was tobacco products. So we can expand the definition to cover that.
I just wanted to, the biggest thing, you know, just saying this is comparable to traditional smoking is very difficult because the kids can do it in the classroom, they can do it at their parent's house, and you'd never know. And it's very easy to conceal, and it's a very difficult problem because it's going to younger and younger grade levels. And so that was, having two children myself, and I know many of you have children, it is very difficult as a parent to even control. I think what we're looking for is some tools, including the flavorings. When you flavor, you know, if I said, I'm gonna sell bubblegum-flavored cigarettes, you'd say, boy, that's candy. I had that as a kid, right? This is real. I mean, they're selling great-flavored vape products. And what's happening is we're seeing it go from the high school to the middle school, and now it's down to the elementary school level. I don't think, and and I wouldn't be surprised if you see those three, four, five, sixth graders start to really become an issue where it wasn't an issue with the tobacco products. And so unless we tackle this and have some tools, like maybe banning that flavoring, I think, you know, this is a little different animal, and it's becoming a real problem because we talk about funding. Now we have to have extra monitors in the in the in the restrooms. We have to have someone doing the enforcement, like extra deans. Where we were just getting on top of, if you look at the health department data, the tobacco rates were going down for the past two decades. It was it was immensely successful, the campaigns, the taxation. It was finally going down. And now we have what was supposed to be a tobacco cessation product become a problem. And so I think just, you know, looking at it from tweaking your viewpoint in that aspect, you know, visitor's school and what it's doing. It's becoming a real epidemic, and it's becoming a management issue for school committees like ours, that's throughout the state.
So my daughter is at the middle school, and she comes home and tells me on a regular basis what's going on at the schools. And yes, it is a problem. It has been a problem. And again, I I realize it. So when I was on the police department, I retired in 2012, I was the liaison to the behavioral health, doing the youth undercover stings on all the businesses for about 11 or 12 years through the police department. So I'm very well aware of all the issues that have gone on for several years with the tobacco and and the abuse. The problem with the flavoring of the tobacco and the and the vape is online availability, just because we make it illegal in Rhode Island, doesn't mean that they're not gonna get it online. If it's illegal and they shouldn't have it, the fact that they're getting it, they're getting it someplace. And I'm not trying to say that we can't try to make it better, but it really does have to happen in the schools. It's not gonna happen at the state legislative level of banning something that's already banned, that's, we're already putting an age restriction on. If they have access to get it, that we have to, it's gotta be a grassroots campaign to teach them that it's wrong and and get them to bring that home. From my understanding, and again, not confirmed, within the last couple of weeks, there was THC being vaped in the middle school. So again, that's what, again, I don't, that's coming from my my student coming home and telling me that kids were getting sick because it was THC. They're not getting that because they're going to one of the local convenience stores and buying it and then bringing it to school. So again, legislation's not going to stop that. I I'm with you on being supportive, but legislation's not gonna stop that. We have to grassroots campaign to teach the kids that it's wrong and that it's harmful.
I 100% agree, and it's a group effort. I don't think we're, what we're asking for is the silver bullet from the state. We're not looking for the answer. We are working, our superintendent has done an excellent job in this. And despite that, we are struggling with it. I think what we're looking at you is if if the state can tax, make Amazon tax people. And if they don't pay their taxes, what do we do? We have enforcement, right? We go out there and we find them and we make them do it. And it's the same thing with flavorings. If you ban flavorings and they do it, you have to have an attack strategy to do the enforcement mechanism for that. We're asking for a few tools in the toolbox. We're not asking for the full answer here. But having those few things that we're asking for helps us, enables us to attack it from our approach as far as education. Maybe it's enforcement on our own level through policies and, and we have beefed up our policies. We are doing, what we're telling you is we're doing everything we can on our end. Our superintendent is doing everything we can that we know of on our end, looking nationally at this issue. It's just when we asked a few tools, we hope that you're listening and maybe bring that back and take it to heart. But I, I appreciate what you're saying. Um, we can't, you know, this isn't easily solved.
I, I appreciate it. I just would ask that because of the size of the agenda and I, we're getting some important dialogue. I understand that, but we have a big agenda. So I'd really like to just kind of move it along if we can. And, you know, I don't want to miss any opportunity for anybody who's here to say anything, but I, I'd just like to keep moving along if we can. All right. The next thing you, you want to take care of that one, it's the enabling school districts.
Okay. Um, I believe Mr. Pearson asked this one. You're on, Mr. Pearson.
Again, I think I submitted this before there was some legislative action on this. So apologize for the redundancy. Um, this is mostly related to the field trip issue that East Greenwich, um, started and our, our previous RIDE director. It, it's an interesting conundrum and I think the, the consequences were clear. You know, we had a group, a large population of students not able to go on a field trip because the school could no longer afford to fund it. And the way the, the guiding principles were handed down upon us made it very difficult for some districts to fundraise, to ask for money, you know, the, the rules were more murky than clarified by some of the language coming down from, from RIDE. Um, so looking for some clarification on this, but also maybe even expanding the, the line of thinking on this. Uh, in Rhode Island, we, we love to emulate Massachusetts. Uh, even though I just saw a map saying the, the state that Rhode Islanders hate the most is Massachusetts, but we want to be like them. Um, especially in regards to education because they are the gold standard in the country, being one of, uh, the top performer, uh, for, for many, many years due to the reforms they passed in the nineties. Um, prior to those reforms, they also passed ability for districts to charge other student activity fees. Now, I'm not saying we should jump and just do it because Massachusetts is doing it, but we should, you know, I would hope someone is looking at the impact that had on freeing up some funds from, from the school districts and, and being able to, to possibly charge for certain things that we're not able to charge for now. We're not talking about core educational things. We're talking about the, the extras, clubs and other things like that. Um, so, so again, if, if you could maybe comment on where we are with the, the field trip conundrum and, and the potential for charging for other activities, I'd, I'd love to hear some feedback.
Representative, Representative Chippendale, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. And, and respecting your admonishment, Mr. Chair, I'll be very brief. Two pieces of legislation were submitted on this issue of field trips. Um, I had one and, and the chairman of H E W had one. His was much more robust. I yielded to him, we're going to work collaboratively to address every single issue you just brought up and, and a lot more. Um, there feels like to me, the hearings were last Wednesday. There's a tremendous outpouring of, of testimony from the community, from students, from administrators, from parents, et cetera, from all perspectives. It was extremely productive and my, my feeling is, and I'm happy to be contradicted if someone knows better, that there is an appetite to correct this, this year. Um, you're correct. It did have a, a sort of a chilling effect when it was first, the, the policy was first introduced. So we're hoping to reconcile it, get it back to the way it was, but better. And, uh, that, that funding, uh, the fundraising portion of it is also being considered as something that occurs outside of just field trips. So we are working on it. I'm optimistic it will pass this year.
Okay.
Okay. And I believe the rest of our questions were from Mr. Murray. So you're on.
Yeah, I know. For me, it'll be brief. I'll, I'll, I'll be brief. Um, most of these are actually townwide issues, not necessarily just school issues. So I'll bring them up one at a time and fairly quickly. Um, what I'm asking for is, you know, whether it happens this session or next session, I'd like to see legislation making revision to R I G L forty-five fifty-five dash nine. That's, that's basically enabling legislation for municipal purchasing. And the reason I bring this up, as many know, I work in, for a municipality and um, I've worked for the, the Golden State, Massachusetts. And their purchasing laws are light years ahead of where we are. And, uh, for those in the room who really, uh, promote fairness and equity in our state, I would say, take a look at our purchasing methods. Um, one is, I, I, I'm asking to increase the levels. Right now it's 5,000, 10,000 for purchases for goods at 5,000 and construction at 10,000. I don't know if anybody's bought anything lately in the municipal environment with prevailing wage, but it doesn't go very far. And what it does is it hamstrings administrators from doing their job because you cannot react to what the public needs. And so what I'm asking is do what Massachusetts did 20 years ago, which is to raise the limit for construction to 25,000 and goods to 10,000. And I think that would improve efficiency in our state and streamline operations. The other thing I'd, I'd like to see is requiring that every municipality register on a central register all bids. Right now is a hodgepodge. Somehow this Newport website got out there as a pilot study and everyone thinks they post to that. Or those who choose to select, you talk about fairness, if you want, you just post it in the local newspaper and the Kent County Times on the back page on, on the bid and you get one bidder. Cause they're the only one who knows about it in town. And that's perfectly legal. You can do that as long as it's posted in the periodical of public circulation. So I see that happen a lot. There's different municipalities who, who deal with this different ways, but I think for those who are really truly interested in fairness and promoting best value, everything should go on like an ARVIP website. It should be posted with the state every bid. And you have a certain minimal bidding timeframe, preferably, you know, over a week. And that would promote fairness in the industry. So I, I hope you'll look at that. And Mr. Rogers?
Yeah, I do agree, uh, that has hamstrung many times, but you can also jump on the state's bid list too, without even having to go out. That, that's available. You just simply use the state and they've already done a lot. So you can actually award it right from them off of their list without even having to go out and advertise.
So it's, it's interesting you bring that up because the municipality I work for doesn't like us to go off that list because they don't believe in it. Um, so while it streamlines operations, there is no mandate to require to go off that list. Many council members don't trust that list. Um, I find that unfortunate as well, but the point being if you're interested in fairness, I think you want the most people to be able to bid on the project. And the, give municipal employees the flexibility, again, this is standbanded, 5,000, 10,000, to have some flexibility with, you know, three bids. You call around, you get three bids. We live in the internet age. I can get three bids off from Amazon and a few others pretty quickly on paper. Um, the prices don't fluctuate. So if I'm going out, why do I have to go through a whole bid process to now, because it's $6,000 for that good, waste the administrator's time, which time is money. If you own a business, that, that actually equates to dollars. So I'll leave that subject, um, live because unless anybody's aware of purchasing legislation that's in place now. All right. Um, municipal infrastructure grant. This is, I think, something important for the community. It was passed last year by the legislature, but it wasn't funded. Grow Smart RI, who those are familiar with that organization promoted it. Um, it's for municipal grants for infrastructure, which we sorely need. The infrastructure bank has done a great job. You still have to borrow the money. It's not a grant, but I think having something from the state that would allow municipalities to tap into to aggressively go for those grants with valid projects would be a good thing to leverage dollars. Like those communities who maybe have community development block grant to leverage, I think would be helpful. So as, as anybody know what the governor put in, I don't know, to the budget. So i- if, if I'm asking to look at the budget and see, and if not advocate for that because I'm Mr. Wazika or council members, I don't know if that's something you're interested in, but I think having that money available for infrastructure projects could be a good thing. Um, state historic tax credit recapitalization. I know this has been discussed many times in the legislature. It kind of went down when the economy went down. It hasn't been brought back, but I can tell you there are many projects that would be online if that tax credit came back. I know a lot of projects that have taken advantage of the Rhode Island rebuild credits. Um, including the Pontiac Mill, which is now almost at operational capacity in Warwick. Um, but these are the things that kind of have gone by the wayside. The economy is good. Borrowing rates are really low, but yet when I talk to development companies in the industry, not building in Rhode Island because the prevailing wage is so high because we're working off Boston rates. And so unless they're incentivized to build here, the projects just aren't happening. I have, you know, I'm a planner. I have shovel ready sites ready with tax stabilization in Warwick. And they're not going in. So anything that we can do, I think at the state level to promote development, and, and that doesn't always involve giving away money. But sometimes those short-term giveaways, giveaways equal large gains in the future. And I think on a case by case basis, that might be, has anybody heard about the recapitalization? Mr. Chippendale, I see you kind of looking the way in on this one.
All of the issues that you're addressing are, are very important. They're, they're poignant to the place you find yourselves now. But another common trait that they all have is money. And we're in the phase right now where as the legislature, we're trying to digest the budget that was handed to us by the executive branch. And as everyone here is familiar with, uh, after it goes through the legislative process, that budget will change. That budget will change in, in many cases dramatically. Based on what was proposed from the executive, we're seeing all indications that they are scrambling to just find money to keep the lights on, to keep everything the way it is. And giving away all sorts of freebies that we all heard about at the state of state address. Everything's free. We're going to take care of children from the moment they're born until the moment they die, and it's all going to be free. State's going to do it all. A lot of wonderful proposals, but no suggestions on where we're going to get the money. To balance the groceries, keeping the heat on and the lights on in the house, we're moving money around, taking it from this place, putting it in this place, scooping it, which is the political term. They're scrambling just to keep the status quo. And then offer some of these cool free programs. So I, I'm, I'm saying all of this because all of these issues are counting on money. We love to create programs that sound good, like the Grow Smart program and other wonderful policies and not fund them. We even love to create mandates and not fund them. Unfortunately, that, most of the things that you're addressing here are victim to that. We're not funding them because we don't have the money. And regrettably, we are in, quite frankly, one of the greatest national economies, certainly in my 50 years and probably in most of the people in this room's lives. But yet the state of Rhode Island is stuck in the mud and we're stealing from Peter to pay Paul in our state budget. I don't want you to get your hopes up that any of this stuff is going to be funded because frankly, it's not. And I, I don't want to sound like a very blunt rube, but it's not going to happen.
No, I'd rather be honest. No, I, I respect that and, you know, I suspect as much. That's why I'm trying to get the feedback to see if any of this is even out there. Um, it's unfortunate. I, I guess it's, you know, I'm, I guess we're all here to advocate for the municipality, which we always seem to be burdened, but you know, and, and I know there's a, there's a feeling like we're always looking to Uncle State to, to correct all issues, but I think when the common themes come up like infrastructure and the ability to broaden our tax base, a lot of things like that can't be done at a local level for our community or, or is very difficult for a residential community to do, as you all are, are live in these communities. So it is frustrating. It's extremely frustrating. And it's extremely frustrating that there are certain things that aren't prioritized that affect a town like ours. So.
Can I just make a comment, uh, if I may? Uh, you mentioned about, you're an error about the prevailing wage being based on a Boston rate. That's not a fact. Right. Rhode Island has all, I'm a big advocate of prevailing wage. I think every construction worker deserves a wage. But to say that it's based, Boston prevailing wage is much higher than what the Rhode Island prevailing wage is.
I misspoke. You are correct. What I meant to say is because the prevailing wage is, rate is so much higher in Boston and we are so accessible to Massachusetts, it is much easier for someone who hangs drywall to go to the Millennium Tower and hang drywall, like my friend, instead of staying in Rhode Island and working here. So are, we have a depletion of labor force, which also drives, that's the minimum rate they make. So it drives wages, it's supply and demand. And that's across the industry. Um, and that's not complaining. It's just the truth. Um, it's just a difficult thing to get over and without creatively thinking, which, you know, if what you're saying is it's scrambling, um, which I think you're right. Um, it's difficult for a municipality to sort of dig in and say, you know, everyone says, you know, the municipality needs to buck up and figure this out. It's difficult to do when you're just trying to work the day to day and keep the lights on here. So, um, and as a school committee as well. I'll go on to my last thing.
If I, if I may just interrupt just briefly, um, I, I'm remiss if I don't say that while I was very doom and gloom and blood with my comments, that does not mean by any means that the eight legislative members here will not advocate for this community. We will advocate viciously for what our communities ask us for. Um, I was just trying to paint a picture in a realistic terms of, of what the situation is, but you asked us to advocate. Absolutely. We will advocate.
I, I appreciate that.
Mr. Nodden, if you use the mic, please, everybody can hear you. Thank you.
Yeah, Lucas, what you're asking for can be done in 20 minutes on a paper and pencil. But politically, it's almost impossible because you have to find that money that you're asking for and take it from somebody else. That's where it becomes very challenging.
Well, I know someone in the house that can do that, right? So.
Well, I certainly can try.
Right. And that's all, all we can ask is you advocate. We can't do that with the speaker or the leader or anybody else. You're the ones who have that seat in the state house and, and can maybe find the leverage areas. Not all of these are going to get done when we get that. But I think like the municipal infrastructure grant, it is a needed program. It is a logical program and it is something that we can leverage Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank, if you get them on board, Grow Smart's on board. I think that that is a potentially workable reallocation in the budget that could be advocated for. So I, you know, I get it. Um, but, you know, I think you have a seat at the table, you're in the arena at least, and that helps.
And I'll certainly put it in.
I appreciate that.
Like, like Mike said, not to sound gloom and doom or cynical, but my guess is it usually won't go through because the money has to come from somewhere. And the people that you want to take that money from, they're not so open to that, the ideas.
Last thing, uh, and this is just something I'm throwing out there. I'm, Rep. Carson is going to be putting forward legislation on short-term rentals. Some may, some of you may not care because we're not that impacted at this town level, but it's a registration requirement, requiring all short-term rentals, Airbnbs, um, type style to register with the state through the Department of Business Regulation. It's a very simple, clean, well, hopefully will be clean legislation that requires them to post registration, registration number, hopefully low fee, that they would go on a website and register. These two prongs on that, one is we're supposed to be taxing those and 1% of that tax comes back to the municipality. And for a community like ours that may have, let's say, short-term rentals on Johnson's Pond or the Patuxet River or others, um, we should be getting that money back. And so we'll know they're out there and it can be enforced at a local level. So it's very difficult to enforce if you don't know they exist and it's very easy to fly under the radar as a short-term rental. Um, the other prong approach for other communities, um, like Warwick is it allows us to identify them to address land use issues, which may also want to be addressed if they become an issue in Coventry for those who are starting the quote unquote glamping, um, which we've had. Um, where you, you run into property issues, you can at least start a strategy at a zoning level to address that. So I'm, it is a clean piece of legislation. I don't envision it being a large cost to run the program. It's very similar to other type of registrations. Um, and I think it's, it's something that would be, you know, uh, low controversial overall.
Okay. Um, I know we got a little off the, go ahead.
Um, so I, I, I'm, I, I'm very glad you've all been very patient with our, um, questions. I just have one request for a comment from our budget director and, no, you're all set? Okay. So I think we're, we're good from our perspective. So.
Okay. I, I know, uh, Luke, we gave you, there was a little, some questions. They were important. They were not quite school related, but they were important. So, you know, we allowed them. And I, at this time, the, the town manager went through a lot of time of getting some refreshments. And I know everybody's probably came here from work right on. So I want to take a five to 10 minute break so everybody can use the facilities and there's plenty of food and drinks. If we could take five or 10 minutes. If we could take five or 10 minutes out to use them, that'd be great. All right? Thank you. Feel food, feel free to take food to your table. Just make yourself comfortable.
Mr. President, could I just make one little announcement?
Absolutely, madam.
I just wanted all the people gathered to know that the food from tonight was from our Culinary Arts program. And the sandwiches, those rolls, were made by our students. So everything that you see up there was done by our students, so...
They did an excellent job.
They did.
They did.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we should get back to our agenda. Madam Clark, if we would do B5, please.
Okay. Discussion on Rhode Island General Law 24-15-5 on municipalities being responsible for maintaining all sidewalks adjacent to highways within the boundaries, even those on state highways.
Now, I believe we had discussed this last year, and there was some confusion about it. So I think there's a handout. I think most of us did, all the state legislators, get this handout?
Yes.
Okay. So Kevin, if you wanna go ahead, and I know this is brought up by you, if you wanna go ahead and discuss it.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is Public Works' request, basically 2.0. Last year, at the legislators' meeting, I brought the same issue up, which I believe is a burden to the town. That issue is a state law requiring cities and towns to maintain sidewalks located adjacent to state highways. I was told by several of you legislators that I was reading the law incorrectly. Recently, the Interlocal Trust promulgated a attached paper titled Sidewalks: Myth to Law and Solutions, which clearly outlines what I had identified as a concern last year. Under Allen General Law 2415-5, municipalities are responsible for maintaining all sidewalks adjacent to highways, highways within their boundaries, even those on state highways. As you well know, the town does not have sufficient funding to maintain sidewalks on our own municipal sidewalks and roadways, not including the state roads. The law needs to be changed by you folks in order to have the state of Rhode Island responsible for sidewalks on state roads. The cities and towns be responsible for sidewalks on municipal roads. We can, we've talked tonight several times about issues that we don't have funding for. But we're not asking for funding. Rhode Island DOT, as many of you know, or you should know, burns through a lot of money in a year. They can maintain their own sidewalks. We have limited funds to take care of our own roads, our hot patch, asphalt, paving that we can possibly... our hot patch, asphalt, paving that we can possibly do, does not count for anything to do with state roads. In the pass out that you see from the interlocal trust, in addition to the area that I had spoken to, also under Rhode Island General Law 4516-8, a person may recover from a municipality, both bodily injury received as a result of municipality's breach of its duties to maintain town or state sidewalks. We don't have the funds to maintain them, and we certainly don't have the funds to handle the liability. We're not asking you to come up with any money, just asking you to have the state take care of its responsibilities. The town will take care of our responsibilities. It's as simple as it gets.
Any comments on that from legislators?
Kevin, have you discussed this to the leagues of cities and towns? Have they come out with a position? And second, I know that Mayor Palacina sued the state regarding lighting of state roads. What happened up in Johnston, the town of Johnston was paying for all lighting, street lighting, on the state roads, and they won, they took them to court, and they won that lawsuit. So, probably maybe to bring this on a statewide discussion for not just Coventry, but for everyone, maybe that might be some sort of pressure on the state to say, "Look, if the judge ruled in favor of the town of Johnson, maybe the leagues and cities and towns can take that position for all cities and towns, that the state should be liable for all state roads with the sidewalks the issue just brought up."
Thank you, Senator. You're absolutely right. Because this came from the interlocal trust, I would imagine that there's been many communities that have had the same problem, and the trust has had liability on all these issues. And I believe if it's brought before the legal cities and towns, they will. I believe that the leagues and cities and towns would wholeheartedly support this because it affects all cities and towns. Can you hear me now? Okay. Okay, we'll see how this works. Once again, it takes, I implore you as a delegation, to please go forward and put, put a piece of legislation in that begins this process. It can't happen without the state legislators putting together, changing the law, because DOT is hanging their hat that this is the state law, and then they're going to follow this, and we're going to be responsible for the roads. I can't do state roads. I'm sorry, our budget doesn't allow that. I can't even do our own state, our own roads enough.
The problem is that state highways that have sidewalks also impose, if there's a defect in the sidewalk, unless there is an agreement with DOT, the liability falls upon the municipality, should anyone get hurt on a sidewalk, even on a state road. That's the problem. So, although the DOT generally, when they rebuild roads, they rebuild the sidewalks with them, but they don't, they don't assume liability. They don't, they don't give a maintenance agreement with the town. So, the problem is the town ends up, the end result is that the town ends up being like an insurer for all of the state's sidewalks. It really is unfair. I think when I researched this, the shift came, it was a long time, it was quite some time ago that the state shifted the responsibility. But it's something to consider if you want to offer some aid to your city or town. This is a great way to do it. It doesn't cost, well, it will cost the state some money, but maybe it will cause the state to rebuild sidewalks more frequently.
Plus, Mr. Gordon, you also bring up the, you also bring up a good point, because the state usually maintains a buffer. When you're on a state road and you own a piece of property, even though it does not have sidewalks, they have jurisdiction at least five to 10 feet. So, that probably goes beyond the boundary of the sidewalk. So, if they're, if they're in possession, or they have jurisdiction over the boundary from the breakdown lane to someone's property, normally folks think that their property line goes up to the end of the asphalt of a state road. It doesn't. It probably comes in probably another five to 10 feet. So, they can't have it both ways, either.
Well, you're right. You're absolutely right, Senator. The, the state right of way subsumes the sidewalk. So, the sidewalk is on state property, but still, the municipalities bear the brunt of maintenance, and if someone gets hurt, the municipality carries the expense of reimbursing them, or having to go to trial and so forth. It's just, it's a system that's, that's bound to fail, because municipalities don't have the money to do it, and the state says, "Well, it's, it's not our problem. It's the municipality's problem, so we're not going to fix it."
We'll introduce it.
And so, it's, it's, there's a really tremendous inducement to fail.
We're going to introduce a bill this week, just to get the discussion going. But we're going to look also at the, the.
You'll make great friends at the DOT.
That's okay. We make friends with everyone every day. But we're going to look at the Johnston lawsuit also, how the judge decided the issue with the street lighting, where the state was responsible. So, it could be precedent, exactly what happened in that case, that it passes on to the sidewalk, so.
That, that might be another issue. You might want to pass a town council resolution and send it to the other town. So, when we get in the committee, the League of Cities and Towns can put their weight into it, and then if you have other resolutions from, because they're all going to benefit from it. This is where things really get on a fast track up the legislature, when you get the League of Cities and Towns, and you get the voice there. So, we're definitely going to put the bill in, and if we can have that done, and start moving to the other cities and towns, that carries a tremendous amount of weight once it hits the committee.
Once you put the bill in, let us know, and we'll do, I can't speak for the council, but I do think it's of.
You can, my opinion is.
It's easier to do it for the bill. They need it for the bill.
Yep, supporting resolution.
Kevin, I think I talked to you about this last year, was it? And I remember going before my legal counsel, and there was some kind of stumbling block. I just don't remember what it was. But I'll gladly submit a bill this year. I'll do it this week. But when I go before a committee, it's very disheartening. If I go before the committee and I'm sitting in the room alone, I present the bill, and it just gets shelved for further study. So, I don't know what your availability is, and like they say, a resolution would be nice. But if someone could show up there when I testify, it would be assistance to me.
If you let us, you let me know, I'll be happy to be there.
Okay.
You have a willing participant down the, down the aisle here.
Discussion on why the town of Coventry was singled out in regards to the interest rates charged on assessments without thought of the impact around the rest of the towns.
Yes, thank you so much. So, I came up to the State House, and I saw this through committee, and I spoke on behalf of the municipality. And I heard the comments and the reasonings behind this, but I just thought it would be great to get this out in the open and hear the, so that way you can express the same comments that was expressed to myself. So, my question was, when we, when the assessment rates were changed for the town of Coventry to 50 basis points above the cost of funds, there are other towns in this, in the state that can charge upwards of 7% as a flat fee. So, it sort of doesn't sit real well with me, as far as there's a specific amount that's stated that we have to charge, but other towns get to charge a lot more. So, if you would be so kind, just to elaborate a little bit more on the reasoning behind that, that'd just be great. Thank you.
Sure. Well, the reason is, most of the cities and towns were only charging half to 1% above the money that was borrowed by the infrastructure bank. And I think you're looking at West Warwick. West Warwick does charge 7%, but they were only charging $6,000 for their sewer assessment versus Coventry, $18,000 to $22,000. I think that was the big difference. But we also took that from the recommendation of the Auditor General on page 36 of his report. He made that as a, as one of the major recommendations in the audit, and it's on page 36 at the bottom, where he specifically said that the town should not be charging more than half to 1% above the money that was borrowed. So, that's the reasons why. You've got to compare apples and apples. And the reason is, West Warwick was a lot lower, $6,000, at 7% is a lot different, $18,000 to $22,000 at, at a higher rate of 8%. So, that was the difference why we introduced that legislation, on, on the guidance of the Order General's report.
What about, what about as far as Warwick? Because I know Warwick is, they're charging, I think, 1.5 or 1.75 over what they're being charged.
Right. Again, I don't know what their assessments are, and I know that Warwick also, last year, extended the 20-year assessment timeframe option to 30 years. So, there's flexibility. You've got to weigh it out. You give a longer assessment, you can, the cost can be over 30 years. Yeah, I think Warwick passed legislation where the assessment's now option, instead of paying a sewer assessment at 20 years, it's extended to 30 years. So, there's a lot of variables involved in, in the, in this issue of interest cap.
Why, why is that the justification for raising the rate, that they have a longer time to pay it back?
I don't know what Warwick did. I'm not, I don't represent Warwick.
They were allowed to, well, their rate is higher, and your justification for it was that, that they allow 30 years instead of 20, like Coventry to pay back. So, that sounds.
But I don't know what their assessment is. I don't know what they're charging. They might be charging, I'm not sure. I don't represent Warwick.
Significant. They had protesters, too.
Their, their last, their last construction, their assessments were in excess of $20,000 in the Governor Francis area. So, they were, they were up there as well.
So, I just wanted to just elaborate a little bit more on this. Is that, would you, would everybody, or for yourself, Senator, be behind sort of a bill that would sort of make equitability on there, some form? I'm not sure what that would look like, but would there be anything that you would get behind as far as more equitable ways of doing this?
Well, the issue is, it's town by town. It's, every town is different. That's the reason. And we also like to get some feedback from you, probably to give us an update of where we are while we're on the sewers, where we are on the sewer program, too. Because there are other recommendations in the Auditor General. Asphalt paving should not be placed on the burden of the ratepayer. It should be the responsibility of the municipality, also police detail. So, if you can also give us a report, and we can work with you this coming legislative year to get an update.
We're not going to be able to answer those for fear of, open meetings.
We'll do it privately.
Discussion on proposed business registration fee for the town of Coventry.
All right. So, this one here is, we're taking, we're looking at other towns, essentially what things are, what everybody else is doing around us. And as we've heard a lot about how the constraints on the budgets are, and how it's being pushed on the taxpayers. So, this was another thing that we were thinking about, and obviously, we haven't pushed this through as far as an ordinance or anything like that, just listening for your feedback as well. We were looking at charging a license fee, if you will, for a business, a very, something small, something like $15. And the reason why is that we do have some businesses that will not pay their taxes, and it gets hard to collect such taxes. There's one in particular that there's a, there's a judgment against from back to 1999, and it's really just very difficult to collect that. They just refuse to pay. So, we can go out and get a judgment against these, these businesses, but again, collecting that becomes a problem. So, right now, looking at just the top 10 that are out there that haven't paid their back taxes, you're looking at over half a million dollars. Now, it's just an idea, and there are some other towns, I believe Smithfield, Johnston, and Warren and Richmond have this on the books. Would you be in favor of, if the town of Coventry were to propose something of this nature, would you be supportive of a, another type of a town only or legislation?
I personally think, again, that's a total town issue that should be addressed by your thoughts, presenting it to the taxpayers and moving forward. And the way I look at it is, if you guys vote and put it through the process of public hearings and everything, and put the ordinance in, if that's what you want, and you send that up for a legislative approval, you just get the stamp. I mean, you're going to have to dictate your own budget. I will stamp anything, pretty much, to an extent that you guys put forward in the proper way, and take the courage, and that's the direction you want to go, and let the chips fall where they may. I think that's totally a town issue.
So, if the town were to have an ordinance pass, and that it got, got put up to you, that you would support something of that nature, is what you're saying?
Yes, because many times, the reason why I went up there is, I didn't like what the state legislature was putting down on unfunded mandates on the town. This wouldn't be an unfunded mandate. It's you setting your own destiny on how you want to balance your books, that you have to answer to. It just so happens that you need legislative approval to do it. So, it's really, it's your choice, and if that's the path you want to take, live by your rules, and as far as I.
If I might answer also with Senator Gordon, I think what you're asking for some type of mechanism where, like, businesses have vitulating licenses, they also have liquor licenses, but you're talking about property tax that hasn't been paid, correct? It's property tax that hasn't been paid. So, you're using.
Tangible.
Tangible. So, this would be sort of a, an inexpensive license, but it gives you the legal authority to, we issue the license, well, you ask us to create this license for you. You'd have hearings, public hearings, you would pass a resolution, send the resolution to us, the legal counsel would draft the bill the way you want it, and because it's a town bill, and it's $15, which would give you the tool to go after these businesses that do not pay their tangible tax, I don't see this should be a problem at all.
Again, I do know the challenges, because like motor vehicle tax, if you don't pay a motor vehicle tax, you can't get your vehicle registered. The town won't stamp, but they won't allow you to do it. It's very difficult. It happens in every other city and town. It gets very challenging on how to collect some tangible taxes that are out there. You have no leverage or no punishment to, to control it. So, I understand the thinking, and I don't disagree with it. $15, you can follow a process and shut them down, and that's the recourse. I agree. Madam Clark.
State fees, $10.
B8, please.
Discussion on moving the primary date from Tuesday, September 8th, to Wednesday, September 9th, and the cost savings for the city and towns.
Okay, I think we've got somebody from the Board of Campuses. This has been brought to our attention, but if you guys would care to explain it and explain. Well, we can't discuss that one, so just whatever's on the agenda. So, it's, it's not the time. So, we'll just take care of what's on the agenda, and then we'll discuss your matter another time.
So, I'm Bill Marquette, Chairman of the Board of Campuses, and Lori Anderson, who's the clerk of the Board of Campuses. There's a bill forthcoming for moving the date of the primary from September 8th to the September 9th, and I think Lori could probably explain that to you.
All those cities and towns is. Okay. I got a loud voice, so I didn't think I needed it. However, no, because of the way the primary, statewide primary, is fallen on a Tuesday, we normally set up on a Monday, the day before, which would be the Monday, will be in the holiday, you would incur overtime fees, town hall having to be open from 7:30 to 4:00 to accept in emergency ballots. It would be a phenomenal fee to have that. So, we're asking that you would support us, the Board of Elections and Secretary of State, that we would like to put it to Wednesday, the 9th.
Lori, so this is a statewide, it would be probably a statewide change, and I believe the Secretary of State has not yet.
Well, it's coming forth, like this week. The other bill I want to speak of that I'm not able to, I've talked with the Board of Elections.
You can tell me afterwards.
Yeah.
So, so we don't, we don't both get in trouble.
Yeah. So.
So, that we can, we can contact, we can have a discussion with the Secretary of State if she has not finished the calendar for the September primary.
Right.
Again, it only happens once every, what is it, every four years?
Yeah, but it's, no, it should, is it 40 years?
Every four?
Because I was told it's going to happen again in the future, just like two years ago. ago when they changed the Jewish holiday. They should have changed, foresee that this was coming forth, and to be able to do it back then when they changed the holiday, the Jewish holiday.
I think Senator De La Cruz introduced the bill, she represents Boeraville, I think she introduced the bill. It's not on the system yet, but we can check with her.
But it's forthcoming, is what I wanted to speak to you about.
Could you send us an email or a letter from the Board of Canvases to the delegation? A, a letter if you could?
As soon as the Board of Elections or Secretary of State comes forth with it, I will send you the.
A letter from you, a letter from you. I know you sent me an email on the issue.
Well, that's why I'm here to let everyone know. But when it comes, I will definitely email you to please support.
Tomorrow, email it to all, all eight of us, so we can bring it up to Secretary of State, and I can try to get you a copy from Senator De La Cruz changing the date. Because the cost is what, about four thousand dollars?
Right, but, huh?
It's about four thousand?
Oh, no.
The savings?
Well, yes, yes, I'm sorry. Right now, I figured about thirty-two hundred just between if we could get DPW on board that would set up and the polling places allow us to get in on the holiday. That's the other problem. We have schools. Would the school department be willing to open up the schools that we need?
Well, that's a town issue there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can.
Well, that's what. That's all the initial cost that we think. That is what I'm saying. The initial cost, it was going to cost to do this.
Obviously, we have.
We're just asking for your support when the bill comes forth to help us out.
I'm surprised like cities like Providence, the cost is probably astronomical. They have probably about sixty polling places, Pawtucket, East Providence, Warwick, Cranston.
Warren has already spoke to their senators and reps. So I, East Greenwich, you said East Greenwich spoke, didn't they?
We had this discussion la, last week.
Yes.
I was listening, I wanted to make a comment.
I think you have to change the law that sets the, I think the primary date is set by law. So all that has to happen, and it has to be statewide, because one town can't have a primary on one day, and it'd be like, I don't know. It wouldn't work.
I'm not saying it's just for our town.
I'm just trying to clarify what we're asking the delegation to do.
Asking to support it.
I think you have to change the law just for this one time, because it's a Tuesday mandate by the statute for the primary that happens to fall just this once, right after Labor Day, which is a problem. It's, you can just make it a one-time public, whatever. We, we, we put a bill through the delegation last spring to change the date for a, a school committee for which we had only one candidate, and you saved us a lot of money and you did it. This is similar, except it's statewide. Okay, thank you.
Okay, you guys have support something to that effect? All right, so, okay, great. So is that it? You're happy with that? We just want to get, well, get the letters sent out to the, to the representatives and the senators and, okay, Madam Click, B nine, please.
Discussion on Senate Bill number two zero eight zero Rhode Island lawmakers to consider gun control bills in two thousand twenty.
Colonel, is there something you propose or question?
I think we just brought it up. I don't, you know, it's, it gets past Senate. Ghost guns.
Just get to the mic, Colonel, and that way everybody can hear you.
In the Senate.
The two items we had were ghost gun legislation, and then it was Senate Bill twenty eighty, which is a statewide CAD. I think the Chiefs, Police are all in favor of both of them. I think ghost gun passed in Senate yesterday.
Right. Last Thursday, Senator Coin's bill passed the Senate by a vote of thirty-five to three. That did not have a grace period. I think it went into effect immediately, and I'm not going to speak for the House, but I think the House has the same version, but it's ninety days, but I'll let the members of the House on their version. But it did pass one chamber, it's over to the House side.
It does have a ninety-day grace period on, on the House bill. There was a couple of other changes made, and the Senate bill would have to mirror those changes, and I'm sure that that can be reconciled. The House hasn't passed the bill through the full House yet. There's still some talk of some potential changes that might be made to actually make the bill functional. As it's worded right now, it would essentially outlaw every modern firearm that your department uses. So we want to kind of tweak it.
We don't want that.
No. So we want to kind of try to tweak it a little bit further, but right now, the two bills in the Senate and the House don't line up, but I think this one is one that is slated to get reconciled before the end of the session.
Representative Serber, you have something?
Yes, actually, Colonel, the House version is my bill, and thanks to my good friend and my colleague, Tom DeRay, he made me aware of my, the possibility of my bill passing as it was to mirror the Senate bill, making criminals out of law-abiding citizens. So actually, he's responsible for the ninety-day grace period, and I'll just let him briefly explain it, if he doesn't mind.
Sure.
So that was my suggestion, that if, if it did pass, seeing it pass in the Senate, I just, I made them aware that we needed to have some type of timeframe to allow people to come into compliance, rather than it take, affect immediately upon passage. So as Rep. Chippendale said, we, we do need to obviously make those bills mirror to make them pass, so something just has to give and it should sail through.
Nice, thank you.
Okay, any other comments on that?
I would just say for Senate Bill twenty eighty on the statewide CAD, I mean, the Chiefs are really in favor of that. They've done a lot of the legwork, the legwork for that, and I think it solves a lot of problems as far as information sharing with concerns people have over the recent shooting in Westerly and, and, you know, doing background checks and things like that. We did a statewide CAD, you know, I think it ended up when the AG switched out, there was a real momentum with that, and then it went away. So I think the funding piece is, is, needs to be looked at.
So on the statewide CAD, so computer-aided dispatch, we want to make sure that we're being very clear, because there was a lot of testimony against that bill, because people think that that's a gun registration bill, which it's not. We know that it's a computer, computer-aided dispatch that everybody would be in line with, being able to share offense, incident, and arrest data versus, you know, gun registration. So unfortunately, that bill was introduced on the same night as some gun bills, and people looked at that as gun registration, so.
Yeah, that's really a small part of it, you know that.
Right. It's, it's more or less so that cross-agency checks, so that when departments have to do those background checks on individuals, they can just easily access that with one click, because all the information will be stored in, in one area, one cloud. But that's, but that's so minute, it's, it's not for that. So we just wanted to make sure that we don't correlate that one with the gun bills, because they really aren't the same.
Yeah, it's really a small piece of that, you know, cybersecurity and just all kinds of intelligence, information sharing. It's a big win if we could do that, even bringing the fire side of into it, DOT and the court systems.
Right, and, and there's nine-one-one as well, so getting all that information so that nine, what nine-one-one receives and sees can come to the local departments, and you can see actually the same thing. I was up at nine-one-one the other day and the, to see the maps and how they can shift everything topographically to show where the call's coming from, how high on a building, so you can equate, you know, fifteen feet to a second floor phone. It, it's pretty impressive. That information can't be shared unless we get the funding for that bill. But again, let's not confuse that with, with gun registration. Gun registration is illegal in Rhode Island, and that's not what the intent of that, that CAD bill is, so.
I completely agree.
Thank you.
So there is a bill in the Senate, I believe it's going to be sponsored by Dennis Algea, which is Wesley's district, which is involved with that issue. That issue arose with the purchaser bought the gun in Richmond. And what happens now, that, that check is just checked through the hometown of where the gun is purchased. So this bill that is being put in is going to require the residence, the purchaser's residence police department to get that information and do the background check and clear it also, or as the clearing one.
So as a, you know, as a department that does a lot of gun checks for mid-state, and they're a big, you know, seller of guns, I support that completely, because you're going back to the hometown of where that purchaser is, and they have much more information and more likely to have contacts. So we do a lot of gun checks, and most of them aren't for Coventry residents.
Yeah, that, that is what this drill, bill, bill will address, because that possibly could have made a difference in that one. Like you said, they're all coming into your department, it's going to be going through the Department of the Purchasers' Residents, so that should address that. Okay, the next one also.
And real quick, so that, that same bill, which is a third and separate bill, totally not computer-aided dispatch, not ghost gun, three D guns, that's a third bill, and that bill, just so you know, did pass House Judiciary already. So again, we're waiting for Senate to, to deal with it, and then that would go to a floor vote later on.
All right, thank you.
All right, so Colonel, good discussion on three D guns, is that suffice? Are you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you're good? All right, so great. If there's all the comments on that, we'll move on to the next item. Thank you, Colonel. Madam Click, D eleven, please.
Discussion of the changes to Rhode Island General Law forty-four dash five dash two, maximum levy caused by Senate Bill three zero five zero and the effect on municipal budgets.
Now, this is a, a cause that the town manager feels very strongly about, and he's expressed it, he's prepared to give us a pretty good breakdown of this levy concern.
I'm going to try to. This is, gets a little confusing after a while. The problem with thirty fifty, when that was enacted back in, I believe it was oh eight, was it?
Five oh eight.
Yeah, five oh eight, but I believe it was oh eight when it was enacted. Great, the bill is a great bill, and it was designed to reduce, have an effect on the tax rate for the communities by resetting the levy every year back to the previous year's levy, and then you move forward from there to get your four points. Prior to that, it used to be based off the tax, tax rate. What happens with this is when you have development that goes on in a community, all of that development and the money, the taxes that are generated by that development get washed back down into the levy to bring the, the new assessed value of all the property back to the previous year. And I passed out a handout to everybody, and this is based on last year. This, this, everything to the left of the gray line on that is what we have to provide to the Office of Municipal Finance every year when we're going for approval. You'll notice all based on levy rate. Everything that we have to report to, what the state goes, all the communities, it's levy rate. The problem with that is because of the amount of development that goes on, and like in last year, if you look at this, you'll see that the town had nearly seven hundred thousand dollars in additional, what would have been additional rev, or tax, taxes because of the development. There was nearly, there was twenty million dollars in new property that came online because of development, which in turn would have generated almost seven hundred thousand dollars in taxes. We don't get to see that. We have to put it into the levy, reduce your levy back down to last year, which in turn lowers the tax rate, but nobody sees the tax rate, because it's all behind the scenes. You then from there have to move up and go. So last year's example, the town asked for two-point-four million dollars for an increase. We'd already, there was seven hundred thousand. So the reality of it is, we were only really looking for one-point-seven million dollars, which would have a two-point-five percent increase on the, on the levy, if it was based on, if we were, we allowed the, the increases by, by development. Go on, we're not. So we've got to reduce it. So we're going and going to the public and saying, look, we need a three-point-five percent levy increase. The reality it is, we're looking, they're actually only looking at a two-five if we got to keep and utilize that money that we got from development. We don't. It resets back. So we've lost that. The citizens get confused, everybody gets confused, I'm looking at everybody. It's, it's, it really is the way it's done. It's very, it's not, to me, it's not the fair way to do it for the towns. We're all looking at pushing towards that four percent, when the reality of it is, if you start looking back at how much development they had, those increases are probably more in line with the two-and-a-half percent. I would have much rather been in front of the public last year going, we're looking for a two-point-five percent increase than a three-point-five percent increase. And it still generates the same amount of money, but it allows us to see that. Now, I understand there's always a concern of why I think this went into, came into effect, was the years that you have a revow. And when the, when the revow goes in, that tax rate number gets all skewed around because of the, the reevaluation of the property. So the year that that happens, stick it and maintain it the way we do it based on the levy. We don't gain anything out of that, but the other two years of the three-year cycles on these revows, the town and towns and cities at least get to claim that. You could have a situation in the way things go, like I said, last year, we had twenty million dollars in, in new development. There's a lot of projects going on. We've got Center of New England that may come into play. We could conceivably have a situation where you got seventy-five, eighty million dollars of, of improvements in development that goes on. Because of that, we've already generated the additional taxes that are necessary to run the town, even with the increases. When you look at that and bring it down, we've collected more than we need. We could be having a situation where we're actually looking to reduce the tax rate by a, by a, a small piece, but yet we still have to go out and, and say we're going for a three-and-a-half percent increase. If we, if we, if we collected, say, a hundred thousand dollars in new development, that hundred thousand dollars we generate, we needed two-point-five million. We would be looking at a three-point-five percent levy increase, but yet we would be offering a point-five percent tax decrease. But the public doesn't see that. They see the levy, that's what we've got to report, that's how the state reports it. So we'd lose out on all that money, and it makes it look like we're actually not managing it as, the money as well as we should be. So that development does us no good. We've got all those increased costs of development, we've got required police, police response, fire responses, and everything, road maintenance, plowing, all of that, we get no additional money out of all of that development that goes on. So it's just something I think we need, I, I don't know if there's any way to revisit this, if there's something we can do, maybe going, maybe if we go through the thing, the League of Cities and Towns, but I think this is something that really needs to be looked at, because we're all facing this problem, and we're not getting anything out of this. It'd be the equivalent of the state setting the, the tax rate for income tax. Here's the tax rate, we collected three billion dollars more than what we wanted. They don't go back and reduce that tax rate to start over for next year. It's, it's maintaining the same. We should be allowed to start where we ended off after the development and then move forward from there. This is, this is hurting us, and it would allow us to be actually going out to the public, asking for less percentage increases. And I think it would be easier and more palatable to the citizens if they see a true amount that we're actually looking to go over what the current taxes are generating.
If I may, a couple of quick fixes. One would be to appeal to the Department of Administration to try to get some relief. You have.
Yeah, but that's coming in on the forty, but the problem with that is, it's based on forty-four, five, two, maximum levy. That's all, it's all spoken for in there on how this has to be done. So we don't, I don't think they could make a change until, unless the law was changed.
Or give you, I thought thirty fifty allowed for cities and towns to appeal and probably get some relief. Another way of doing this quickly is probably do a bill, an adjustment to thirty fifty just for the Town of Coventry.
No one would sign it. That's the truth. We did that.
Last year?
We did. In fact, if you don't mind.
No good, sir.
Bring it up again.
The proposal, I, I drafted it, so I know what it said. What we tried to do was carve out just for the increased development in Center of New England, so that we were going to isolate that and take it away from the levy, so we wouldn't have to overstate the levy and thus create a mindset with the public that we were raising their taxes by that amount. The levy is just not a very good barometer for how much your taxes are being raised, necessarily. It can be, but not always. That's what Ed is saying. And it becomes punitive when it's wrong, because the taxpayers, we now have an all-day referendum. The town council put on the ballot the question of, instead of having a financial town meeting at a place where everybody participates, now it's just turnout at the financial town meeting all-day election. The voters are going to be more conservative, the town is going to have an even harder time, that the turnout on an all-day is always more conservative than what you get at a cozy little town meeting. So I think the town is faced with an even more challenging scenario for financing now, because you're going to have that same, I don't want to call it a misstatement, it's just misleading, as the underpinning for why the council wants you to approve a budget. Well, the, the, the underpinning comes across, the rate, the tax levy rate comes across as an increase. So what we tried to do, just to enjoy some of the growth at Center of New England, was to have a carve-out, and I understand no one wanted to sign it, because it looks like a tax increase, but it really isn't. It's really a remedy to a law that forces you to make it sound like you're raising taxes when you're really not. It's, it's a, it's, it's amazing that it got through the General Assembly the way it did, although, well, having been a member, of course, nothing surprises me. But it really is. But it really is, it's something that warrants someone to take a really good look at it and see if there's a better way to do this. A bill for Coventry would be great. I think one of the fears among the delegation was, once Coventry does it, everybody's going to want it. And then the whole 3050 just gets diluted. So there is some virtue in that. I think the better way to address it is as an overall fix. I think, I think we have one member of the Finance Committee, is there a member of the Finance Committee here? Well, that's where you can, I mean, you're going to have to have finance deal with this. It's sort of a rewrite of 4452. And it's going to take bravery because people will point the finger. It's easy to say it's a tax increase. It's easy to point that finger when you rewrite 4452. But if you really look at it completely, it's not. It's just a different way of computing what you're doing.
It's a more realistic way of doing it. And it's, it's an honest and fair way to do it. Because now, now the public gets to see the exact amount of increase we're looking to add and not, and not the inflated. As I said, there are, there are situations where depending on the community, depending on the size of their budget, how much their, their property is assessed, their properties are worth. And the more you, the bigger the city and town, the less effect this has. But you could have a situation where enough development goes on, where you realistically could be giving a tax decrease and then, but showing on reporting that you're giving an increase, a substantial increase at that just to make up, because you've got to make up that money that you took, that you would take in. That natural growth occurs simply because of development. Like I said, last year, we looked at, we had $20,6878 in increased property values because of development that took place last year. That's the orange. That's the orange. When that's the amount of increased value from development that we had last year. If you look at the green and go look at the estimated assessments and you go across and you go, the one in green is last year. The first one in that chart is the previous year. So those are the differences in what they, if you go over and stick with the greens on each line level, even basing it on last year's tax rate and you go through and you bring it all out, like I said, that amounts to $70,284,080, where we actually pulled in, we had to reset that back to the 69625551, which in turn lowered the tax rate artificially, behind the scenes, that nobody sees, to probably about, probably about 30 cents, 40 cents a thousand. Again, nobody sees it. All they see at the end is we're going up 3.5%. Reality, we only went up 2.5% in additional spending over that. So we're losing that. We're losing that ability to get that money. We've got to reset. And even though we've got all those increased costs because of that development, we don't get the benefit of the development. We lose that because of 3050. It really, and that's why if you look, if you look at nearly three quarters of the cities and towns last year, had a tax rate, a levy increase in excess of 3%. If you go back and look at what their actual tax rate increase was, I guarantee they were, they were at least a half to a point less than what they had to report and what the state reports. So it's an artificially inflated number that just makes it more difficult for people to, the public to understand. And in cases like our community where we've got, and we have to go to the public to get them to approve this budget and they're seeing 3.5% increases, they're not liking that and we end up in a situation where they deny it. We're going back to the drawing board and we've got to do it. I'd almost guarantee if I would, we were able to go out and say we're doing a 2.5% increase last year, I don't think we would have had FTM 2. I think we would have been able to get that through on one pass because.
Yeah, just to give some background, we presented the first budget at the normal, I think it was, what is it now? It's in May, I think. We did our first FTM, all-day referendum. I think, was that the, is this the first year we did it? Yeah, this is the first year we did it. We had the largest turnout we've ever had and it was overwhelmingly down. Yet as, as the town manager explained, that 1%, you know, when people see 3.5 instead of 2.5, it has an effect. It gets people to go and vote no. And it's really, it's entirely up to the General Assembly. There's no way for the town to fix this. This, this misperception. So what ended up happening in Coventry is the budget was significantly cut down. It was the only way to do it with the system we have in place and it narrowly passed the budget.
Suggestion.
Sure.
I think what you're going to have to do is put this question out to the voters in November. Explain what you're doing. Let the voters pass a change on 3050 for the town if it could be done that way. Because here's what happens. It becomes a political football. In the past, there was bills passed 10 years ago on the sewer program and we got the blame for it. It became a political football and I think that's why you didn't see any of the General Assembly last year touch the Center of New England bill. But if it's passed.
That's why this, that's why this needs to be statewide and not local for the town. This affects every community in this state. Look at those numbers. Look at the, look at the levy increases and go back and look at the tax rate increases. They're all artificially inflated. And it's hurting us where, and again, every community that's going to go to a financial town meeting and we've got to put these percentages out in front of the public, it's killing us. It's killing everybody.
Is the League of Cities and Towns helping Coventry and other communities to try to correct this?
This is something that I've been looking at for a while and I haven't had a chance to bring it up to them yet. We had this meeting scheduled and that's why I'm bringing it up to our delegation. I thought it was a place to start on this.
One point about that, Senator. Coventry is the largest town that still has a financial town meeting. It's the largest municipality. Every other municipality the size of Coventry, the appropriating authority is not the people as it is in Coventry. It's the city council or in some cases, the town council. It's just really hard to overcome that statement when you have people coming to vote that it's 3.5 when really the tax increase was 2.5. And that 1% can mean everything. I can see everyone's really enthused by this.
I know. I don't blame you.
It's going to be really big.
I understand the argument and it's somewhat semantics.
It is.
It really is.
But it's a semantic that is brutal.
Well, many times with semantics, you can argue it completely a hundred and eighty the other way and come up with just despicable examples not to do it. That's, that's my issue. It doesn't change the dollar amount that you're sending out to a tax bill on a house. It doesn't change that at all. It just changes the percentage because we're in a good economy right now. And that's the only time that you're probably going to benefit by trying to interject the increased revenue into last year's budget because it's simple. It's 4% above the previous year's operating budget. So.
Yeah, but it's 4% of the levy.
Correct.
The levy. And the levy has to get artificially decreased by that development that goes on every year. And this, and even in good years, bad years, there's still development going on and there's still money going into, increasing on there.
I do understand your argument, but at the end of the day, it still comes down to semantics. And it's, it's how you, as a town, present the budget. I understand the challenge and it's more a PR thing.
But we've got to, we've got to report it based on levy. We don't have an option to do that.
Yeah, I understand. It's just one of those tough things to legislate is my point because there's, there's equal arguments on the other way. Being a semantic, it's, you know, you can come up with this.
But it was always report, it was always based on tax rate increase prior to Piverweed. It was always the other way before 3050. And 3050 changed it, changed the dynamics of it and put us behind the eight ball and makes it look like we're going for larger and larger increases every year. When the reality, I'll act, we're actually going to do, I'm going to run, do some numbers and look at the comparators over the last couple of years since 3050 came in. Tax rate versus levy rate and what we actually did. And I'm going to find, I know I'm going to find that it's increased pretty much every year because of that. That, that gap has gotten bigger and bigger. The delta has gotten bigger between the two numbers.
If any of these legislators want to sit down with Tom Manager, you know, anytime to, because it is confusing. It is very confusing. The more you talk about it, the more, he'll be more than happy to sit down and discuss it with you and, you know, maybe have a little PowerPoint or display, you know, on his board in the office. President, you have a comment?
It was a question.
Question.
When, in preparation for the all-day referendum, what materials are given to those who come to the polls to vote?
Oh, we do a mailer to every resident of the, did we do that?
We did. We've switched that over to, we do it out in the paper. But there, there's.
At the polls themselves?
At the poll.
Any, in general, what materials?
At the FTM, they get a full handout at the FTM, which is where they ask their questions before we go to the all-day ref. We give a full handout, including all of the paperwork that we submit to the state. Everything that we've, we draw up, we do a whole, it's usually between 10, 12 pages of information that we give on the whole budget, on it, on the increases and the way.
And the state requires that you show that number that you don't want to show or you don't think is a fair representation?
Well, no, this, well, it's, it's not whether it's, yeah, we're forced to show that number as the levy. And we show the tax rate. We show that tax rate increase as well. But people don't see the tax rate number. They see the levy number because that's the bigger number.
Understood. And so understanding what you, what you give the voters for information and hearing the comments, it is a PR issue, right? Very simply, on, on that documentation, you can put something as easy as an $80,000 house, $100,000, go all the way up to half a million or whatever you think is appropriate in a town and show them what the dollar amount will be and what that percentage is. That is a true representation of what their taxes will be going up and that will nullify the question.
We do that.
Done. We have a meeting before the referendum. We've only done this once, but we can see what's coming. It's, it's going to get harder and harder when you have to state a number that is almost by its very nature much larger, not much, but I mean, a full percent, which is a lot. Typically a percent larger than what you're really trying to do. And it's devastating.
Well, I'm happy to have an offline conversation with Ms. Wazik. We've worked on things in the past. I think it works out quite well.
Thanks.
I'd love to sit down with you. It's, if you, if you ran our FTM last year, you would have seen the questions. Everybody brought up about 3.7, actually the first one. It wasn't about the 2.5 on the tax rate. And even though you keep telling them, it's the tax rate is this, the tax. They look at the levy increase. They look at that 3.5, that 3.7. That's what they fixate on and rightfully so. Because that's what we have to report. That's the way it's reported in all the advertisements with the state. The state reports it. If you look at their, what they, what they post on the municipal, Office of Municipal Finance website, it's levy increase. It's not tax rate increase. It's all based on levy increase. Nearly, like I said, nearly three quarters of all the communities had a 3% or higher levy increase last year. I guarantee a good percentage of those were down in the twos without a doubt. But we have to report it that way. So anything less than that and not reporting that, we'd be disingenuous and we'd probably end up in a jackpot with the state if we didn't report that number.
The state doesn't allow you to do that. That's the, that's the problem. That's the law. So anyway, we'll talk about it.
All right, great. All right, thank you very much for that. Just before we go on, the next item will be just an update by each legislator. I just want to state that there is no public comment on the, I know there's some people that are probably a little upset about it, but we've never, as far as I can remember back, done public comment because of time constraints, because this is the opportunity for the town government and the state government to get together and discuss some issues. The intention of that was hopefully that the people and the taxpayers would have contacted your local council people and forwarded any questions, any concerns to us and we could have it discussed. So I did not put public comment and like I said, it hasn't been ever since we've been doing these meetings. So I just want to clarify that. It's just, just for time purposes, there's enough discussion between the council and the legislators. At this time, I'd like to see if there's any final updates by each legislator, if you have a comment or anything to say. It's your opportunity. Yes, Representative.
I just have one update. Senator Raptakas and I have been working with the Kent County Water Authority about the water tanks not being used, the one on Route 3, kind of behind Nikki's Lounge. And the other one, I believe, on Reed Schoolhouse Road. And those will be coming down in the spring. The Kent County Water Authority finally awarded the bid. And I spoke to Bob Boyer about a month ago. They're becoming, the tanks will be coming down in the spring.
All right, thank you for that update. Appreciate it. Does any other legislator have any comments, any updates on what's going on in their districts or the areas that you'd like to just bring to our attention?
Just briefly, again, I spoke to the police chief earlier, but there is going to be a package of legislation pertaining to drunk driving, about four or five bills, look backs, penalties. Because that's another serious problem that not just Coventry faces, but all the communities. Again, there's going to be, again, we're going to have the discussion on the item that we talked about, the cap on the interest rate, because there's other recommendations from the Order of General that we got to sit down and go over. And there was one bill that did pass the Senate last year, didn't pass the House. We're going to reintroduce it. But it was regarding, it was an issue in Coventry last year about advertising in school list service. I know that's a very important problem. So we're going to try to address that prohibiting any, any type of political advertisement in the school list service. And we're going to try to make it a statewide bill.
Okay, great. I just personally want to thank each and every legislator, school committee, everything for coming and making this an informative meeting. I appreciate the time. I know you guys are back to work tomorrow evening and you're only night off this week. So once again, I think it was informative and I appreciate your time. I think a motion to adjourn would be in effect for the town council and we also have to adjourn the school committee side. So a motion to adjourn on the town council side would be in order.
I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. We have a second. We have a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Ayes have it. Meeting adjourned. Once again, thank you very much for, the school committee, please.
Yes, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting. I have 8:45.
Madam Chair, make a motion to adjourn at 8:45 p.m.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.